Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually pursuant to the governor's executive orders. We have no postponements this evening and all of our regular members are here. So we will now begin with the regular meeting agenda. Our first item is a discussion item, North State Real Estate LLC at 779-781-783, North Street, for a pre-app review for interior renovations to convert existing office space to a personal service establishment. And...
Mr. John Hegney is presenting and I believe I just promoted-
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, he's got his hand up, but I got him. Okay.
I got a little lag on my end here. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
And hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, John Hegney for the applicant, Dasa Salon, and our contract purchaser of 779-781 and 783 North Street. We're here for our pre-site plan application review because this project needs a special permit. We're on a very unique lot on North Street. It's about a half acre in the four acre zone that has been legally non-conforming with commercial uses dating back to a blacksmith shop in the 1800s. We have a condominium ownership structure, a shared septic, and a number of other zoning non-conformities onsite that we think make it a suitable candidate for 6141. The site is currently occupied by three separate structures, two of which are occupied with office uses, one of which is vacant, which we're looking to convert from office use to a personal service use, in this case, Dasa Salon, and a second story or a second floor residential apartment. We're not looking to make many site changes here. We are looking for a change of use. As part of our application, we did something, we put together a breakdown of how this use would fit within the same parking demand of the existing office use. This is something that the zoning enforcement staff would regularly review for permitted uses in commercial zones. Our point here is that we don't think that our change of use to a high-end salon is going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood than not. A salon isn't going to be like a high turnover use, like a nail salon. So we're not going to see a significant turnover in the personal service stations. It's not going to be like fitness classes where you see high turnover with the changeover of classes. You know, customers are coming here, they're spending a significant amount of time receiving the hair services and then transitioning out as needed. At the briefing, the commission highlighted two topics that I'd like to address. One, the septic. Our clients have been very proactive in meeting with the health department. I know Ms. Donilon and her staff would probably like less people to bother them while they're making their time with voluntary assistance with vaccine rollout. But we have been speaking with them about the septic needs for hair salon and the separator that would be needed to protect the septic system from the chemicals that would be used as part of some of the hair treatments. The septic servicer that currently services the site believes that we can use the existing septic system with no incident. Secondly, I know Mr. MacRae is Chair of the Green Space Implementation Tax Force, is interested in seeing if we can improve the streetscape here. That's something that our client is going to discuss with our architect, Anthony Minichetti, who will happen to be our neighbor at 777 North Street in the event that this is approved and our clients follow through with their purchase. I have nothing further, but I'm happy to field any questions from the commission. We are interested to see what information you'd like to see when we return for-
You raised, you raised what we had discussed at the briefing. We would like you to make your case for this being a less detrimental use, given that it is another non-conforming use, that it would be less detrimental to the neighborhood and therefore that you address the issues of parking, which I believe to some extent you have, but also traffic intensity and again, a thorough discussion with the health department regarding septic issues. Those were the key issues that came up from the commission. We recognize that this has been some sort of commercial use for a long time and that basically you would just have to make the case that this is no more detrimental or that it is less detrimental. That's what I've got. You mentioned the curb cut that Mr. MacRae had mentioned. So those are all the things that came up at the briefing and most important is this issue with the non-conforming use. Does anybody wish to add anything to that?
I did have a question, Madam Chair. So the septic, if I recall correctly, is strange in that it's on a neighboring property, correct?
It is on this property. It is shared among the units and shared with the property to the south.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I will say, this is my second set of clients that have taken a look at the septic system. Back in 2018, we reviewed this for a potential historic overlay with the Historic District Commission as part of a study to see whether this property could be used as an animal shelter slash hospital and grooming facility. The needs for, the septic needs for that type of use are significantly more than a hair salon, considering those animals have a lot more hair on their body than the rest of us. At that time-
We knew you wanted to make that joke and we-
I did.
I just thought, is that, is that just an intuitive remark or there's really, that is known?
I want to reveal whether you hit that on the nose or not.
This sounds like midnight jokes. Okay, it's only, it's only 5:09, you guys. It's too early for them. Okay, so it was a more, it was more disruptive to this, it was more of a strain on the septic system. And in addition, we would have told you that given that the grooming facilities are more constrained location-wise, that that use is less approvable, if you will, since the number of business zones into which it can go is reduced. It was a wise choice that you made, I would have said, my guess.
The reason that I wanted to discuss the septic on the neighboring property, though, is that under that scenario, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not just the town health department, it's that you have to get the state health department involved. And so presumably the commission would want you to do that, but maybe not. I'm curious to find out what's involved before you kind of pursue this use issue too much. Because what's needed at the state level?
That is correct, and that was the review that was done when the Planning and Zoning Commission last looked at this property, or not last, but looked at this property in 2014. As part of that, because we were making changes to the building, we triggered a septic review under the Public Health Code. Because of the unique situation with this shared septic system, we need an exemption from the state in order to continue to use it. Normally, they want one building, one septic system, one property. Anytime you start tinkering with those ratios, they ask you to meet with Matt Pollock up in the state. For a change of use, if the local health department asks us to do that, we will certainly do that as part of this process.
And then also the last user in there was the bike shop, right?
That's correct.
So one of the things, just in terms of the not more detrimental to the neighborhood thing, so I don't know how long they were able to stay open or whatever, but that was, I was, I'm actually kind of curious as to how that played out and whether you could get data for the commission when you come back in terms of when you were with the commission last time, there was concern for the neighbors about large pelotons of bikers arriving, you know, where they were parking. I'm just kind of curious like what ended up happening on the property from a use standpoint. I mean, obviously, one conducted their bike business, maybe different from another. So I'm not trying to suggest that what, what they did is the only comparison to be made, but I am actually just curious when you come back.
So that was the status in 2014. Happy to provide the commission with the timeline of the uses onsite. That use has since been replaced with office uses. That building was unit two. That's currently occupied by an office space for a construction management firm and office space for a jeweler. But we can certainly provide a timeline of the uses to the commission so that they're well aware of what has come through this property.
Katie, I don't remember us agreeing to the change from retail to office.
I do. It was, it was a-
I remember, I remember the bike shop, but I just don't remember it going to the, from the retail. I remember the bike shop. Oh, okay, so you'll have to, we'll have to dig out our decision letters on it. So we've got the history. I just don't remember that switch. All right. So that's it, Mr. Hegney. That's what we got for you.
Right, so we got the previous timeline, the septic-
Yeah, but staff can do that.
Inclusive. I think it's a septic issue, just to make sure that everything's all buttoned up on that, specifically the state issue. And I think it's a demonstration of the parking. I think actually a chart would be best to show that and the, and traffic impact. And anything that you can do to actually close up the curb cut on North Street. Just, it just seems it's unusually wide for no reason.
Does the applicant need to provide a replacement scenario for the septic or that it's not required?
That'll be part of his review. And I think actually it goes back really to the state as well. If they need a consolidated system or they get the exemption, then it comes back to local health authorities for what they want to do. They may, may just have to show that there is a expansion area or a replacement area on this, on those site. And just show that in a plan.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, and in, and in the, it's not just parking, it's also the, the turnaround, the, the number, the turnaround in the parking and the demand, the frequency-
Do you want to say the-
Turnaround, turn, turnover. Thank you very much, Mr.-
Madam Chair, while I have the commission's audience, I would like to ask that we waive the requirement for a full-blown traffic study on this.
You can do it, you can, you know what, you can very easily, you could start out doing this with ITEs. And, and you could do a good estimate doing, because what we're interested in is the trip generation. How many trips a day are going into a five-station salon relative to what you've got now? And that it not be more, more intensive on the neighborhood? That's the deal. Okay?
We can certainly start there.
So start there and we'll try to spare you the traffic study. I think, I didn't see any grumbling on the commission, so I'm assuming everybody's okay with that. Okay?
Yes, simple, simple as possible.
Simp, you can keep it simple. We don't want to cost you money. Okay. So with that, we move to our next discussion item, which is Streetworks Development. This is 1B Streetworks Development LLC, also a pre-app review for the conversion of former retail use to a mixed commercial use within the existing building at 257 to 265 Greenwich Avenue, otherwise known as the Ralph Lauren Building. Yes.
Madam Chair, I'm recused on this project.
Yes, thank you, Mr. MacRae. Mr. Lowe is the seated alternate this evening and Mr. Lowe will go for it.
I'm going for it.
Yes, and hello, Ms. Kaufman.
Hello, how are you all?
Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Jackie Kaufman. I'm an attorney with Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy in Stanford, Connecticut. And here tonight with a pre-application presented by Streetworks Development LLC, just represented also, although not on your list here, standing by, by Jose Gonzalez and Andrew Wallace. And they are the prospective tenants of 265 Greenwich Avenue, which is the former Ralph Lauren Building. And we are here under section 6, 614, 6102, 6103.1 of your regulations to allow a restaurant café use and other accessory uses, which I will walk you through. We really very much appreciate the opportunity to be here in the pre-application setting and it's, it's a great program you have and it's our goal, hopefully, and if you agree, to advance this to a, an administrative review with staff because we believe that the uses are consistent with the former uses that were there and don't introduce new or more intense uses that would otherwise be required to come to you through site plan. And we say that specifically because when this building was built in 2007, it was built specifically for the Ralph Lauren use. And there are conditions in that permit that say where there is a change of, a significant change of use or user that the applicant needs to come to you. So we were, so we are here in that, in that arena and to demonstrate to you that we think that this use is consistent with the former uses and other surrounding uses. If I may-
Just interrupt you for one second, Ms. Kaufman. Pat, I hadn't realized it, for some reason, I didn't see it in what we got, that this, the idea was to go to admin review, administrative review only if we concurred with the uses?
Well, I'm not quite sure if that was explicit in the materials by the applicant.
Okay, so Katie, if you, if I didn't, wasn't aware of it, Katie, the applicant has advised that if we concur with the uses proposed, that they would, they would want to go to just administrative review and not to full site plan review by the commission.
Right, that would be the idea because restaurants don't require a review by the commission on Greenwich Avenue and neither does retail space. So the only thing that was really in question from, from the procedural standpoint was the transportation business or whatever. So assuming that, that you are in agreement that it's compliant, I just think it's advisable to do it administrative so we have it documented.
Thing is that nothing we do in the pre-app review is binding or can be a decision. So they would still have to come before us for a decision on the uses, even if they don't submit a site, a site plan. That's what's tricky.
Not, not necessarily, because if, if, like, just, just as in items past, you know, we obviously refer to the zoning enforcement officer for just, for daily decisions on interpretation. And when there's something like this, it's a bit more complex than we take it to you, but we've done that before in discussion items, so you don't need to make a formal decision. If you wanted to, you could do that and have them come to you as a, as a site plan if you wanted to do it. But we don't generally have a process for quote-unquote interpretation of the regulation in that way. So if, so I would suggest that you discuss it and decide how you, you know, how you feel about it. But if you find that what they're proposing complies, I would suggest you just send them our way for an administrative, just so it's, it's more of a documentation process.
But I was unaware until now that that, the expectation was that we would actually make that decision tonight?
Oh, you don't have to, you certainly don't have to.
Okay, because we need to chew on it and I-
Absolutely.
It was, oh, so now we're supposed to like send them on their merry way? I was expecting a discussion. Okay.
Obviously, all on your timeline and comfort levels.
All right.
And if you, and we have not, by the way, Madam Chair, we have not discussed this with the zoning enforcement officer, which is typical of pre-applications. As you know, we don't route them to different departments. In this instance, you could certainly ask us to do that if you would like to have his opinion as an example. We haven't done a formal routing. Let me just put it that way.
Okay, all right.
So that might be something you might want to consider as an example.
Okay, all right, Ms. Kaufman. Now that we've gotten all that stuff out of the way, you can go back to presenting. I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's okay. We're certainly happy to, to appear before you as, as many times as, as necessary to answer all of the questions.
Thank you.
Especially, it's so wonderful that you meet so early.
Oh, don't give regret for that. They forced me. Okay.
Katie, may I share my screen?
Yes, somebody's sharing your screen.
Oh, good. I'm scared. It looks like I'm sharing my screen down here. Okay, wonderful. I, these are images that you've seen as part of this submission, but I thought for the purposes of our discussion, it would be easy to, it might be nice to have a visual up on the screen for others who may wonder where we are. 265 Greenwich Avenue here, it's the, the middle of the avenue highlighted here in red. We are in the central Greenwich Business Retail Zone. Oh, here we have, as I mentioned, 2007, built building, two stories with a basement containing roughly 14,786 square feet. And it is improved in the rear with eight parking spaces. This is interesting. I can't get back to my, to advancing. Oh, there we go. Here we have the, the building a little bit closer. You can vaguely see the, the parking spaces in the rear. The state-of-the-art building, absolutely beautiful. And here's, oh, there we go. Hold on. It's a little slow for some reason, too.
Jackie, sorry, I'm controlling it.
Oh, you are? It's like, why is it not? Okay, you can go ahead. You can control to the next, to the next slide. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. There we see it outlined in blue and you can see the, the spaces behind the building. The building's currently vacant. Ralph Lauren had been there since 2007 and abandoned its, its tenancy three years ago. So it's been three years now that it's vacant. And certainly this year has been no friend to, to, to retail spaces. And, but it is an absolutely tremendous building if you've been by and it's cited and was very much inspirational to, to Streetworks. The interior is a world-class interior and there are a lot of great opportunities for different retailers, all of which who have not come forth, maybe because of the, the cost and expense to maintain this interior. But we do now have an interested tenant who wants to reuse this and revive what is otherwise, what is this great, great space. So if we can advance one more time, I think there's a few pictures we can go through. Here we see CGPR surrounded. We can keep going. So this is the interior. You can see where there was a great big rug at some point. Certainly those floors would be restored. We can keep going through that. That's the first level. You can see the large lobby, which is a very grand entrance into the building. And that would be maintained as a lobby and receiving area on the ground level for the multiple uses. And please advance. The staircase will be maintained and that will take you up to the second floor uses that we'll discuss in a moment. We can continue through there. All these, all of these great architectural features. Let's stop here for a moment because the conversion, I know in listening to your discussions yesterday, a few of you had some questions. So I'd like to take you floor by floor through the proposal. It's mixed commercial uses, meaning that on the floors we do have related but different, different uses. The first floor, as you can see here, if I hover over, are you able to see my, my cursor here? No, you're not. Okay. So the grand hall-
Pat would have to, Pat would have to make you co-host for that and you would-
Oh, that's okay. You don't need to, Patrick. If, if there's a question, you may be able to find it very easily on the plan. So the center hall where the staircase is, you just saw that photograph, that will, that will remain a nice, large entrance hall. The entire first floor to the left and right of that entrance hall will be used, is proposed to be used as a restaurant. In the rear, there is a kitchen and there are various types of seating proposed here. We have traditional tables all the way to the left of your screen and then small breakout rooms that will model the existing breakout retail spaces that were there by Ralph Lauren with some modest interior renovations to create more intimate dining spaces that are both traditional and non-traditional, meaning some you could have a cocktail or coffee, a salad in a, in a couch in seating living room style area, or you could sit at traditional tables. One of the great benefits of this now, I should have started with this, that we have a very, very excited prospective tenant who has the ability to open, to open this within six to eight weeks from obtaining a building permit. They are ready to hit go when, when we have the blessing from you. And that's exciting in this type of environment, this type of retail environment. And, but under the COVID, current COVID conditions, they certainly can safely and socially distance their patrons within this space. So all traditional restaurant café here and the type of offering is commensurate with other restaurant cafés that you are, are used to on the avenue. The second, the upper floor, we can now go to, this is our first floor entrance. Now we're going to go upstairs, up the staircase. There's the grand staircase which you can use and then also an elevator. And this is a conceptual breakout. Certainly it follows a lot of the, the existing wall patterns that are part of Ralph Lauren and the breakout spaces, but also can be modified accordingly. Again, a great, a great opportunity to socially distance patrons and people on the avenue under these conditions, given its size. This is what we called a lounge space. It is an accessory used to the restaurant below and has a very open concept. It is designed for quiet spaces where you can have coffee or tea. This restaurant is not permitted on the second floor. It, it's a place where you could purchase something on the first floor and then bring it with you upstairs, where you could bring something, you know, with you from, or order from another space on the avenue. Again, a synergy business model here. But it will have power outlets, Wi-Fi, breakout spaces, a space where you can have a private meeting. I like that the Streetworks has designed, designed some of these rooms to be a modern-day telephone booth where you can go in, shut the door, or have space away from the busy, the busy restaurant on the first floor to have a private and quiet conversation. This is a model that exists in many, in many places in many cities. It's very progressive. It's very exciting. And really creates a community environment. It's experiential and that it provides an indoor community gathering space. And this entire proposal before you, this, this commercial proposal is really a way to keep people on the avenue. There are many opportunities to walk up and down, but sometimes you need to rest. Sometimes you have multiple things you'd like to achieve in a day on the avenue and may need to stop and make a business call, may want to have a quiet conversation with someone, stop downstairs to, to have lunch with, with a friend or companion and then just continue on. And that's a great thing for the avenue, especially in these retail conditions. The basement level, if we can continue to the next slide. You can see it's actually only a portion of the basement here that is proposed to be used for storage purposes with some health and wellness proposals associated with it, really falling in within the personal service establishment arena. And we've called this in, in our conversation with Katie, this was really a bike, it started out as a simple bike storage option. And we're really excited about this because we know that there is great, great interest in the community for biking. The basement level here is proposed with amenities that will serve other restaurants, restaurant customers upstairs. And it's, but also something that can serve those who are working in and around the downtown. And really the service is aimed at reducing reliance on cars in and around Greenwich Avenue. It creates secure storage for bikes. You can see in the upper left-hand corner is secure bike storage locker area. And then there will also be multiple points within this space for e-bikes, e-skateboards, scooters. And there are bathrooms here as well as shower stalls. So if you were storing your bike in amenity that you would be privy to is a shower. So if you bike several miles and you wanted to go and then spend the rest of your day at work, you had a quick place to, to shower and turn around. And that is only available to you if you are storing, storing your bike facility here for a period of time. There are further opportunities for business synergy here by affiliating with other local gear shops for repairs and upgrades to service. There is personal wellness equipment that's in the basement, again, in this basement area that we're proposing here.
If I'm having trouble, okay, so I'm having trouble discerning what the personal wellness equipment is. Can you just describe it? How many stations you're going to have? And, okay. The number of stations. And then the second question is, what is the structure of being able to use this? Is this a- Is this a club structure for the basement?
If, if you can see, let's, let's start in the upper left-hand corner. This is the, Patrick, would you please put your, right there, or a little bit lower, a little bit lower. This is the bike storage area in here. This is a secure locker.
Yep.
And they'll also have charging stations within this space. And then the bathrooms and a few shower stalls are located at the top there, thank you, Patrick. And then across from that, we have, we locate one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have about nine pieces of equipment that are proposed there and some open mat area for stretching. This is really a conceptual plan, and sometimes people bike and they want to continue using other equipment. The model is that this was, this is not a membership. Both any space within this building is available to the public. As a personal service establishment use, one would have to engage in a point of sale by storing their bicycle to be able to use this equipment here. And if you were a patron of the restaurant and wanted to use these facilities, I understand that you may use that as well. But it's certainly not just open to the public like a free gym, and it's not a membership. And it will be monitored based on reservations for bike storage.
Can I interrupt also a related question here? Would there be a fee for the second floor use of space? Or could I and my fellow street urchin friends stop by for several hours of conversation?
The model now is to not include a pay structure for that, but there is an anticipation that there's a point of sale on the first floor. But I do have members of the, of the operator, the operators are here, and can certainly speak to that question for you.
But before you do that, Ms. Kaufman, as long as we're on the second floor, on the, on the second and first floor, our regs specify that public areas of a restaurant in the CGBR are restricted to the ground floor. If I buy something to eat on the ground floor and I take it upstairs, to me, that's the public area of the restaurant. I'm consuming it on-site, and I see that as a public area of the restaurant on the second floor. I'm happy to be disabused of that interpretation, but that's how I'm interpreting at the moment.
This is a very similar use to the two-level story Starbucks that exists in town. A supercharged Starbucks or Starbucks downstairs, people have, have equated it to, but.
We don't have a two-story Starbucks in town. Am I missing something?
Oh, I'm sorry if I misspoke.
I'm sorry, as far as I know, we don't have a two, our one Starbucks closed. The one by Whole Foods is one story, the one in Riverside is one story, and the one on the avenue is a story.
Ms. Kaufman, if you can get food from the restaurant and take it upstairs, is it in a to-go bag or is it on a plate?
No, it would be in a, it would be in a.
And, and then also you could buy something from the little coffee thing you have on the second floor, or bring something in from the outside, which then back to Mr. Lowe's question, is, you know, is it sort of like a, like a WeWorks type of thing, right? Where it's, or like a hangout or whatever, where you could just, it's like a, it's like a place, it's like an indoor park almost. And I'm not saying that's how you should interpret it, I'm just trying to understand if you can just go in there, sit down, you don't have to have food, you can have food, but if you can just go in there and have like a quasi-meeting with somebody, right? I mean, that's, that's effective, because you said it's accessory to the restaurant, but it's kind of independent of the restaurant in some ways in that Mr. Lowe could come in off the street with his friend and just sit there and chat, with or without food, right?
That is, that is right. That is the way the business model is, is designed right now. Certainly, it could be used as a flexible workspace. Yes, it does not fall squarely within to, into office. We see it as an extension of a personal service type use or restaurant type use, simply because you are permitted to bring something up there, where it would certainly have encourage points of sale. But it is, it is very much experiential and allows for a, just a larger space for people to, to be on the avenue, to spend time with one another, or to take a break from shopping and then continue that activity later in the day. And we see that as a, as a good point, and one that is very consistent with several goals, both in, that are articulated in this, in this zone, and also in the P O C D. The, the use for being able to bring up a coffee upstairs, there will not be table service on the second floor. I should be very clear on that. The table service is restricted to the first floor. There is no direct table service on the second floor. That would not preclude you from ordering a coffee or a muffin and bringing it, and bringing it upstairs to enjoy for a period of time while you're upstairs.
But you, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify this. So but because there's going to be food up there, someone has to clean up. So you have to have some kind of services up there to.
There certainly will be, will be, will be services that would be cleaning up, but it would be, you would be self-bussing. There is not, when I say table service, I mean, there is not someone who comes to serve you or take your order and bring you your order.
So it would.
Be custodial services that happen continuously.
The comparable's location that we have in town would be Odilees and Riverside, where you can take your food upstairs. Katie, do you by any chance know what the history is to us having this provision in our regs that public areas of a restaurant in the CGBR are restricted to the ground floor? Because it's weird, it goes on to say, you can use basement or second floor for food prep and accessory non-public restaurant uses. So boom, right there, you're really in a snag because this is a public use and it's associated with the restaurant. I, I'm curious why we even have the reg.
Yeah, that meant like bathrooms and coat check, you know? So it's not, I don't think hanging out and eating the restaurant food from a takeout bag was ever contemplated in that regard. It was more bathrooms and coat check and things along those lines. So I think the idea is that we just didn't want, you know, restaurant A on the first floor, restaurant B on the second floor, because it's just an overload of restaurants, was the, I think, the original concept, hence also the liquor restrictions. It's the same thing, like how, how's that gonna work if you had everything as a restaurant?
Well, and should, is that regulation, is that sentence still appropriate today? And should we keep it, because I'm having trouble with it, but I'm open to removing it. That would be another thing. It is in six one oh three, oh, I'm no good, six one oh three point one. It is under B for ground floor uses in the CGBR.
Got it, thanks.
See, I, I don't really see the space personally as, as an extension of the restaurant. I sort of see it as more of like an office type of thing. And it's kind of confusing, like Peter, like Mr. Levy was saying, because, you know, how does it get managed? I'm curious, how does it get, like, in other words, if I wanted to have a meeting in that space, can I, like Greenwich Library is an example. That's, that's a place where people can, you know, rent rooms to have meetings and that kind of. Like, could I? Or?
I know, but, but it says, but it says accessory non-public restaurant uses. I mean, it goes really to, you're sort of not supposed to have people sitting at tables eating. As I read this, that's what it is, and I'm amenable to changing the reg, but I'm finding that this is not fully consistent with it. I mean, because if we want to be more flexible on the avenue and we want to have more uses on the avenue, maybe we should open up what you can do on the second floor, and we've talked about that a lot. So I'm open, I'm open to going there, but I'm just struggling with the wording that's in there right now.
But it's not a restaurant, it's, it's an office, the second floor is an office. It's not a restaurant.
No, no, they're gonna.
Not a public area of a restaurant.
Well, I can go.
It does takeout from other places, and it does, it serves muffins and bags.
But I can go downstairs and I can get my food and I can bring it upstairs. And then when I'm done and I bust my stuff, somebody who works for that restaurant is gonna have to clean my table. I'm just saying, it's a public area of a restaurant.
Shouldn't we get a better handle?
We're trying, I'm just.
No, no, on the rationale for the original regulation.
That's what I just asked Katie, and she said it was to keep, to not have the avenue turn into all restaurant. But as retail struggles, and we know that we need different kinds of uses on the avenue, should we be more flexible in this regard? And my leaning would be yes.
And what's interesting also, if I may say, is you can have office on the second floor, but only if you have parking for said office. So that's what, what Ms. Kaufman's presenting is in some way eating and in some way an office. So it's sort of like a funny little hybrid.
I think we should, we should think about the reg itself, honestly, because the reg limits what we can do on the second floor. We've known for a long time that we need to open up some, just throwing it out there. So Ms. Kaufman, you haven't totally convinced me that this isn't the public space of a restaurant. And to Katie's point, it's kind of an office too, and you're not providing parking for an office. So maybe our reg just doesn't work for what the future holds for Greenwich.
Weren't we struggling several months ago about second floor uses?
Yes, we've been struggling with second floor uses for a while, because we know we need to.
But very specifically with an application we were struggling with.
Absolutely.
And, and this arguably might provide an opportunity to create a use that is acceptable, even if you have to change the regulation.
Yeah, and it's just a question, right now, Katie, what would you do with the office use? Would you, is there a way, right now, I'm just reacting off the cuff, just thinking out loud, I'm thinking we take that sentence out of our regs. Does anybody have a problem? Katie, would you have a problem with that?
What, which sentence specifically?
Public areas of a restaurant in the CGBR zone are restricted to the ground floor. The basement or the second floor may be used for food prep and accessory non-public restaurant uses. Because it's just really clear that we are having some sort of public food eating consumption use.
I guess I'd want to check in, yeah, I'd want to check in with the building official, Bill Maher, ask him what that meant for stairs, elevators, handicap accessibility, additional bathrooms per code. And, you know, what is a rest, like if you're just, is it, you know, if you had, let's say, a conventional restaurant on the first floor, and then take out and hang out upstairs in doggy bags or whatever on the second floor, like is that, you know, what does that mean for, for building code purposes?
Right, okay, so we need to chew on this a little bit, I think that's gonna be.
And Madam Chair, is that what you're thinking? Or are you thinking that, that you could have tables upstairs like Gingerman? Gingerman is a non-conforming use, but a legally non-conforming use. But is that what, is that what you're thinking? Or are you thinking what Ms. Kaufman's kind of presenting?
I'm thinking we, I'm thinking we maybe let people have public restaurant space on the second floor. If we've got vacant second floors, that might be an answer. But it has to be the same restaurant, it has to be accessory to ground floor restaurant.
Sounds, sounds right to me.
Sorry, what about the regulation that says, what is it, Pat, that you can only have three, you can't have more than three floors, two, yeah, two floors, because now theoretically.
Two group one uses, if two group one uses for, per three floors.
Yeah, we have to reword that too, I'm looking at it.
That section also, so it would, it would run through.
Ms. Kaufman is a perfectly competent attorney, I know that for a total fact, and she could give us, she could give us wording. So we wouldn't have to argue.
We'd have to work with staff to, to discuss that.
So I just have trouble, I think our regulation, you know, and it may be just too restrictive. I don't know, people react, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm having trouble getting my brain around it like it's written and what's being proposed, but I, I like the idea of what's being proposed, and I don't want to discard it.
So just throwing this out there, if you recall, you had, have had applications over the last five to seven years, maybe longer, time flies when you're having fun, about personal ser, about classes, personal fitness classes on the second floor. You've had office proposed on the second floor, meaning remove the restriction about parking. And when you raise this, because really, it's, it's like, it's an ecosystem in some ways, the parking ecosystem on Greenwich Avenue. And the other uses, maybe, I'm throwing a big maybe out there, maybe less intensive with respect to parking than what you're discussing right now. So that's something for the commission to think about as a whole. Like, in other words, in your discussions in the past, you've been very tentative about uses, it seemed to have less of a parking demand than this would have. So I'm just throwing that out there as food.
Well, part of the concept, part of the concept is to promote non-vehicular traffic, I think. And, and that's, if they're gonna promote that in their transportation basement zone, that might argue, if it's successful, that might argue in favor of less of the need for parking.
And then what about the valet part of it, Ms. Kaufman? Is that, is that, can you touch on that for a second?
Well, again, we were very appreciative that we got into your agenda so quickly, and we had begun looking.
You may be on it for a long time though, so don't be grateful.
But no, but it's.
Hotel California, you can get on, you just can't get out.
I like it. We, we started to explore the concept of valet parking and had not found space yet at the time that we applied. So it was, it was not prudent to propose that as a, to propose that as a viable solution. But I will say that, you know, we did look at all of these spaces. You know, flexible workspace is absolutely the way, the way of the future. We've seen it very successful in many cities, and even in and around, and in and around these communities. Stanford, have many very interesting concepts like this. And it's not quite like the ones that exist in the immediate surrounding communities, or even like what's in Manhattan. And this is also, does not fit squarely in the definition of office uses, when we look at that definition as well. And there are no employees, there are not a set number of people to come to the space and stay for the day. And I think it certainly lends itself to a, a not, to a, a less automobile reliant community or population, because it's, it's really here as, as a stop in one's day. And I will say, I think we need to take this back up, just to talk a little bit more about the applicant, is that the Streetworks is a split area of, is the development arm of Hudson Bay Company, which owns the three Saks Fifth Avenue stores on the avenue, and they have for many, many years. So they're very, very much aware of the culture on Greenwich Avenue, of the complications and challenges that, that patrons in the community face with parking, and that retailers face with parking. And in many of their other outposts throughout the country and, and beyond, they have a food component and a lounge component that are attached to the retail restaurant, or, I'm sorry, to the retail, to the retail stores. And that provides respite to, to a shopper, and allows the shopper to have some nourishment, have a rest, and then continue on with their day, potentially have, have a meeting there as well. So they have a long, a longstanding comfort level with operating, you know, at a high-quality level. But they also wanted, they see this great opportunity here in this building and on the avenue, not just for themselves as an existing retailer, but for their other retailer, members of the community. So I think that some of the questions that have been raised by both the community and the commission members tonight about the operations are very well-founded. And I think that we will do a little more due diligence and provide you with some of those operational answers going forward. But I think that there is a commitment to excellence that you can expect from this operator in, based on, based on its experience and commitment to this community.
So unless, does anybody have any thoughts they want to toss in? Or do you kind of like the direction we're heading? Dennis, go ahead, Mr. Yaski.
Yeah, I wanted to get in a little bit more. Ms. Kaufman talked about the, the developers are there, or somebody that's got the retail tenant. I'd love to know more about what they have in mind, because this building, as you pointed out, is state-of-the-art. It's very what you might call high-class. I'm worried that the name, Streetworks, kind of invokes like a food court, which is what I think we're all a little bit concerned about in terms of having a restaurant on the second floor. I mean, what's the nature of the retail? And, and after that, I got a second question going back, if we could bring back those screens? Because you described one half of the first floor, but not the other half, and not.
I'd be happy to bring back those screens in a moment. But Streetworks is, Streetworks is the name of the applicant. It's actually the name of the tenant that will be in the building. Streetworks is the development arm of Hudson Bay Company, which is a retail-based company. As I mentioned, they own Saks. So the name of the restaurant or of this particular use will, will not, I believe, be Streetworks. It will have a more specialized name that has not been selected yet.
But but what would be the nature of the restaurant? Is it high end? Is it a fast food place or what?
No, no, certainly not. It is, I think we're staying away from words like high end. It really is a restaurant cafe. And I don't want to, I don't want to pick something that exists because they do have a very special model here. But they will have, they will have specialized food preparation. They will have a high-end cafe menu.
Because I think that does get into the whole notion of why we restricted. We don't want a fast food place.
Of course not.
Like a McDonald's where everybody runs upstairs, there's thousands of people. I'm not sure that that's what we want for the avenue. So, but can you bring up the picture of the the floor plans also? Somehow, Patrick?
I mean, the curious thing about this, Mr. Yaski, is is that might be what this particular tenant does. But once the restaurant's open, let's just say, whether it's high end or or fast food is, not fast food, that's a different connotation, but what, you know, whether it's flipping burgers or handing or doing, you know, lavish steaks is not under the commission's purview any longer.
Yeah, but we can restrict it. See, if it comes in as a site plan, we can restrict the restaurant. Sorry, that's the other reason I gasped in the beginning. Because I was kind of headed this way that we don't want fast food. But okay, we can fix that if it's a site plan.
Miss, Miss Alvin, since it's not, it doesn't feel like the commission feels this fits nicely. So if if you feel that, you can come up with a regulation that would force a review if you don't feel it fits into the current regulation. So you could say if you're doing hybrid uses, whatever, then you, you know, you could, you could write it such that it would require a site plan, because what works here is obvious. Either you write something that is a blanket that works for every establishment on the avenue, or you create something that's a hybrid or blah, blah, and it requires some process.
I agree with Mr. Yaski 150% that we absolutely cannot do fast food on the avenue as long as we can avoid it. Number one.
Character enters into the equation.
Yeah, number two.
We understand that certainly.
Okay, no, no, and and we know you do, Ms. Kaufman. So number one, we would want to make sure that that can't happen somehow. Because it's, it's just inappropriate to the avenue, however you want to do that. That said, to me, until Ms. Kaufman still has to answer the second half of Mr. Yaski's question. But the easiest thing, I think, is for Ms. Kaufman to work with staff and hammer out what could be done regulation-wise to allow something like this without a question as to whether or not it's a fit in the regs and that the commission is open to greater flexibility. But Katie made an excellent, excellent point. We have been gun shy. We're afraid of creating too much intensity on the avenue. We don't want the vacant spaces, but on the other hand, we know that if there's no parking available, no one's going to come, what Yogi Berra said. So if you all can work on what would you would do as a text amendment so that this works, I think, am I speaking for the commission that we're very open to this? Or am I misstating it for someone?
No, I think we're all, well, I'm open for it. I'd like the idea of something different. The vacancies are really alarming when you walk up and down the avenue. So I think we're very attracted to the, the potential of having a successful operation in this building. So I don't know, it's just, that's for me.
And me, anybody else?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Parking, there is parking there, but it's for bicycles.
And it's only eight spaces. There's car parking too. There's eight spaces behind the building, but they're hard to use and they would be for employees, which is a good thing.
Patrick, can you go back to the first, the first floor? This is the second floor. Got it.
The, the first floor, Mr. Yaski, is in, in the rear, so at the top of the, the top of the page, that's the rear, that's the back of house.
I got it. I read thousands of plans. What's on the right? We never talked about the right.
Oh, sure. On both sides, on both sides. So on the right side, they have two living room spaces and those are breakout spaces where you can eat and dine. Right now, it's being shown, there could be tables there. Right now, it's being showed as a, a living room eating environment. So you see there are couches and chairs and a coffee table or other type of loungy type of relaxing. It's food service, total restaurant service in those spaces.
You do realize that putting offices in there would be a problem.
Oh, absolutely. Those are not, those are not offices, those are not desks. It's just an alternative eating arrangement. Certainly if, you know, those can be, furniture can be tables. The furniture could be changed to tables if that is, is that, that's a comfort level. There's a bar and it's really to create like a lounge, a food lounge area as well.
I tell you, whoever the tenant is, I hope he's getting a great rent deal. Because if you look at the revenue generation, not our business, I understand, not my business, but an awful lot of public, non-rent producing maybe areas. But can we come back up to the second floor for a second? Patrick?
Yeah, there, there you go.
These are all lounge areas, right? The entire floor?
Yes.
Well, sort of, because there's tables.
Different, it's, it's really just modeled, we're showing various types of furniture that can be situated in, in any of these spaces to create a space for people to.
Yeah, there's a lot of dead end spaces. I mean, you have to go through a space to get to the other space. And I guess that's because the walls are set up like a shop right now, I would assume. All right. So you're not, you're not touching the walls? Are you going to leave all these walls as what? Is that what I heard?
And I think these reflect some modest interior design changes. But because of the, because of the excellent design inside the building, they wanted to try and preserve as much of it as possible. I know we have these beautiful fireplaces and windows and they're just trying to make the most of the existing conditions.
Right. I would, I would encourage the tenant, if they can find other uses, particularly on the first floor, the right side, not so much the second. We are looking, as you pointed out, for kind of new retail experiences. Now, the lounge is a different experience, I grant you that. But there are other ones out there too that might be more revenue producing, but because we want to see it successful. You mentioned that this is similar. I mentioned yesterday that I've seen, I would call them incubators in other cities, where they really do provide very high-end, certainly wired, techie spaces. They do charge for them in a way. But you mentioned other, other, were you thinking about the double decker Starbucks?
But, Mr. Yaski, that's, that would be an office use on the second floor, which just with our current regs requires that the applicant provide parking. So to Katie's point, we've backed off of changing that in the past. But if we're open to that now, we would need to amend that, we would need to make that regular choice.
Madam Chair, I didn't suggest office. I was trying to get example, actual real life other cities.
All right, okay.
Of multi, you know, floor spaces that are similar in concept. I mean, she only mentioned one that I'd heard of, the Starbucks double decker thing. Are there other ones? I've seen other ones and I'm not saying.
There are, there are some, there are some really beautiful ones, knock your socks off, that we've actually looked at. But as a team have not received full sign off as compared, for comparative purposes yet. But based on your comments yesterday, that did spark us to begin some of that research. So as, as part of our follow-up, we will provide that to you.
Really helps us understand new experiences, because we really are bend over backwards trying to get new retail experiences. But we're kind of an old world Greenwich Avenue, if you know what I mean. But I think you've got a lot of open minds. And if you could help us with some of these others, that would help us see, see the light. Let's put it that way.
I appreciate that opportunity and can assure you that this operator would put something in here that, that you would be proud of on Greenwich Avenue. And.
And then you have to, and, and when you think about the text amendment, you have to do it so that any operator that goes in there does the right thing. Mr. Hardman, you wanted to say something?
No, I just, my recollection, Hudson Bay's got extensive retail experience and whether it's executed in the current version of the space or not, I, I think it would, if it's the right entity that I recall, would certainly help us preserve the character and in this, particularly with this building, the upscale nature. I mean, it's gorgeous piece of architecture, which deserves, you know, a, a really high quality tenant and image.
Yep. And then, then staff and Ms. Kaufman would just have to work to make sure that we protect that so that in the future we get that kind of tenant. Okay, does anybody want to add anything else? I'm wondering if we have any comment. Go ahead, Mr. Levy.
I was just wondering if, if, if the applicant thought of anything to do with outdoor dining.
They've got space on the street, they could add it in the summertime. They've got enough sidewalk width that they could add it in the summertime.
Well, just that they might want to think about that, incorporate that.
They can do a, you know, they can do a seasonal permit for that once they get the rest of it done. Does anybody from the public wish to make a comment? Please raise your virtual hand. Oh, no comments from the public. We must have said everything there was to say. That's, that's exciting.
We'll note that we did have, we've been in contact with some of our immediate neighbors on the avenue who are supportive. And if they have not already, we'll be providing, I think, letters of support. And we also received one from Ben DiMarco today as well.
Yes, I know. He's very excited. I, we saw a copy of it. He's very excited about the bicycles.
His, his hand is up, actually, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. DiMarco, if you would go ahead.
I got it unmute. Okay, here I am. Can you see me? No, you can't. Okay.
Don't worry about it. You can talk. There you go. Hi.
No problem. Thank you for allowing me to say something. I, I, I just had a thought. I don't know. Certainly, I love the, you know, the, the transportation center idea. But I'm curious about the roof. That one pictorial of the, of the roof, is that, is that a usable space? You're talking about outdoor dining. I'm wondering whether or not that roof could be a penthouse kind of a dining experience or some sort of experience up there. Is it possible?
I do not know what type of HVAC equipment is on the roof or if that's possible, but we'll certainly look into it. And if, I don't know that you, if, right now you're not dining on the second floor, so I don't know about dining on the roof, but we can certainly explore it. I like, I like where you're at.
Yeah, well, you know, the, the view would be, would be pretty incredible, I think.
Yeah, there's a shot. There you go. Back, there you go. So there's all this, that it's, they've got all the HVAC equipment up there.
Sure. No, I know that, but, but it's not, it's not totally covering it.
Yep.
So I don't know, maybe it's not feasible, but.
We're thinking about it. So there you go. Thank you very much, Mr. DiMarco. I know you're excited about more cycling on the avenue. So with that, I think if, so I, I think the message from Mr. Yaski was the most succinct. You, you're talking to people with open minds. Wait, wait. Oh, Mark Pruner. Hello, Mr. Pruner. Thank you. I had my back to it because I was looking at Ms. Kaufman, who's in the, on the left side. And Mr. Pruner, if you would unmute, you'll be ready to go. Okay, there you go. Hello.
Hi, how are you? Though I'm casually dressed, so I'm just going.
Okay, no, we don't have to look at you.
The, all I want, I, all I wanted to say is I think this is the kind of creative use that having it on Greenwich Avenue is an excellent idea. Clearly, the world of retail and retail is changing because of the online world. Restaurants are changing because of the pandemic, but even when they come back, I think we're going to see a different world. And this sort of openness that you all have shown to coming up with creative solutions. I do remember when I first moved up here in 1967, every day, every Sunday, we would go to Bob Forss's townhouse. And the best table in the place was the one that was on the second floor next to the window overlooking Greenwich Avenue. And I, and I, I think this would be a wonderful thing for us to do, to give a greater variety of dining options.
Well, you know, I think you're absolutely right to be open to, 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 we've been saying that we need to be more flexible because it's a changing world and this is, but our regs are not flexible enough. And this is an opportunity to revisit on both, on both fronts. So thank you very much, Mr. Pruner.
Yeah, I thi- I think it's a great idea. And if there's a way to build in some general flexibility, because overall the rules were established because they were thought to be good rules. The world has changed, but you don't necessarily want to have to change the rules every time.
Exactly.
And if there was some way to incorporate some of the ZBA issues in here so that one of the things I know from some work in commercial real estate is, is people are very reluctant to go to more than one agency.
Oh, oh, I see. Yes, but we've already fixed that to a great extent. You, you, you basically get stuck with us an awful lot of the time now and don't have to go to ZBA.
Well, most of you are nice people.
No. I don't think so. But thank you very much. Thank you for the comments.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You know, Ms. Kaufman, Mr. Pruner raised an interesting, indirectly, he made another point. One other thing to consider is whether in that first floor use, you could have a space that accommodates pop-up shops. Just a thought. So maybe even a bicycle vendor or something is, you know, whether there could be a retail shop in that first floor use that comes and goes.
Well, it raises an interesting point, because that's something else that we had, we had looked at. There are endless, there are, I don't want to say there are endless possibilities, but.
But there are a lot of possibilities with what.
Streetworks has a lot of great ideas for this space. And again, these are all progressive New York City, it is-esque ideas, or I always say New York City, but just, you know, more, bigger city scale ideas and they.
Sophisticated, more sophisticated.
But it's, it's not even just sophisticated, but one of the things we see, I think, in retail is that, as these trends develop and as our communities change, is that there's a lot of crossover, I think, you know, a lot of crossover opportunity between retailers. So you mentioned pop-up shops, which is always a great opportunity for, for local vendors on, you know, short-term scale. It's a great opportunity too for, for landlords who have vacant space and have the ability, especially around the holidays or during sidewalk sales, to, to be able to grab space in short, short periods of time.
So.
But they have these great ideas that could allow for crossover.
So again.
I, I'm not, I'm not privy to discuss it yet, but, but I will.
When you, but think about describing the use as being possibly, you don't have to have it concrete now, but that when your use comes in, that it also include the possibility of retail on the first floor, not just restaurant.
And if that is, you mean a, a hybrid, a hybrid opportunity.
A hybrid first floor, that you propose it as a hybrid first floor where you could go all restaurant. You could potentially have a greater proportion of retailer or none, but that you don't have to do a change of use to come back in and add retail. I mean, you don't even have, you wouldn't even have to go to staff to, you know, it would be just already done. So, well, I would say work with staff to get there, but you're hearing how open we are to it. And the public is open, which is also exciting to me, because sometimes we want to move forward and the public is very uncertain about it. There are definitely two views. When we did the consideration of second floor office space not requiring parking, we did get pushback on with concern about insufficiency of parking on the avenue. So just, but as you guys work with staff, I think you can get there, right, Katie?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we do have, you know, have dubbed this as an experiential retailer, restaurant showroom. I know that there are opportunities they have with furniture retailers. So we see all this furniture that we are showing and you're wondering, oh, how do we, how do you furnish this great big space in a way that is consistent with the surrounding architecture? And they have an idea for that, partnering, partnering with, you know, restaurant, with, say restaurant, but with, with, you know, high-end furniture retailers. Well, you could have a QVC code attached to a chair or to a table that would enable you to purchase that as you're sitting there experiencing the table while you're eating. So.
And since Katie hasn't asked you yet, the other thing, of course, is an art gallery.
Well, actually, when we first spoke to Katie, that was one of the first things we said. I don't know if you recall. I don't know if you recall, I want to say about 18 months ago, it was before, it was before your group and then then to ZBA with a small art gallery and she had introduced me to, to the Greenwich Arts Council as part of that, that this particular gallery owner could, could partner with them. So I was aware of that. And we said that with all of these walls and all of this great space, it would be a great opportunity to also have some type of gallery experience where the installations were constantly changing. And it would, that, there are so many great galleries throughout, throughout town that it certainly is a great opportunity for that as well. I will continue this conversation. I will just say, since we are here in pre-op and I do admit if I didn't say it now is that like all retail, opportunity is not a lengthy visitor. And we're on a, on a fairly tight timeline to move forward. Not to say that I want to rush this. I think that I like what you are saying to us, I can guess with, as does the applicant. But I will hopefully try to move this quickly.
If you can get something.
As soon as possible, because this is, there's not a lot of time left.
Yeah. If you can get, if you can get something drafted and work with staff and get sign off from staff that they think it's, it's something that is going to be okay, then I'm sure we can accommodate you on an agenda. They haven't been too bad recently, so we'll do our best to accommodate you.
I mean, Madam Chair, the only concern I have, if you don't mind just spending another minute on this, the only concern I do have is I do, I do appreciate and hear the, the commission's excitement's too strong, but you know.
No excitement's good.
But, yeah. So that's all positive. But, and I, I heard the same, I, I guess my only concern is asking Ms. Kaufman to write something up that will obviously benefit her client. I mean, that's the, there's, you know, that's right. But, but my issue and concern is what about the other uses that we've discussed on the avenue? I mean, do you want to just stick to, to, to the model that Ms. Kaufman's coming with? Or do you, I mean, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill, I guess.
Well, she's got to, you've got to address the second floor office use because to some extent, that second floor is an office. Unless she can convince us that it's not an office, you're probably going to have to tackle both. And that means that we're not providing parking for second floor office uses. And I'm going to leave that call to you, Katie. If you, if you don't think it's an all-in-office on the second floor at this point, I'm less seeing that second floor as an office as I am seeing it as a public space of a restaurant.
I mean, I, I've always loved the idea of Ms. Kaufman, just throwing this out there. If you're permitted retail on the second floor, which you are now, and there's a certain parking demand for retail, which obviously you're exempt from because you're on, so if you could somehow back in the number of seats that you could have, you know, comparable to the amount of, because the seats is also based on the square footage. So.
Seats for restaurants, seats for.
No, for office, for office. So the park, yeah, the park. So, you know, if, if you're allowed a certain amount of retail space on the second floor. Right. Back the math, back the math out to figure out how many parking spaces, you know, how many seats that would, that would equate to for an office. And then as long as it equal, as far, I mean, what difference does it make? And then you could argue, well, the difference is that the office people show up in the morning and leave at night versus coming and going throughout the day. But I'm still feeling that there may be something, some flexibility there.
It's a very useful exercise. Just as prepared to have that conversation with you about the office today. So if I can take another moment of your time, if we were to take a straight, it's roughly 4,900 square feet on that second floor, that would require, since your parking is based on a square footage, that's roughly 32 spaces, I believe. That we would.
That math, that math was too fast for me.
Oh, I'm sorry. So if we have, we might later, 4,900 square feet approximately divided by 150. It's 150 of usable floor area. That's 32.6. That's 33 parking spaces. That would be required here if this was a traditional office setting.
No, actually, Mrs. Kaufman, it's, it's, it's the, it's usable and the definition usable is 75% of the gross. So you take your gross, you multiply, you know, times point seven five.
That's 36.75 divided by 150 is 25 spaces.
Right. You get 25. So your estimate's a little bit, what do you want to call it? Generous, but.
Too generous. So it'd be roughly 25 spaces. You know, certainly when we first started talking about this only a few weeks ago, seriously and explore it. We haven't had a chance to explore valet options. That may be a more, that may be a faster path to success if we're able to do that. If you want to qualify this as office. And certainly I'm happy to continue to work with staff on text changes, but that, you know, may.
I'm not seeing.
For this or other things in the future.
I'm not seeing it as office as much as I am. It's very restaurant-y linked. That's the thing that I'm concerned about the most personally. So, and also, so the other thing is I'm still open to changing the interpretation if somebody convinces me that there's an example where we didn't call it, where people don't call that part of a restaurant when you have takeout and you bring it upstairs.
I like that. I mean, right now you have, we looked at this a few different ways. The office uses and the way the definition reads is that a flex office space does not seem to be captured by your more traditional definition of office. But it certainly doesn't, I'm trying to see if it has a, shall mean, it doesn't say shall mean or give me the, oh, it says office uses include but are not limited to. Doesn't quite capture what this could be, but this certainly is the office space of, could be an office in the future, this type of kind of flex space. But you don't have, it's, it's not characterized by other limitations that are included in your office uses. And we really looked at this under 385 personal service establishment, which also have quite, there's quite a bit of flexibility that's, you know.
Yeah, personal service gives you the flexibility. I'm not as concerned about the basement. I think you can make it work under personal service.
Could even argue that the second story is, it could fall under personal, personal service establishment.
Tell you what, why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't you chew on it for a couple of weeks?
I will.
And why don't we have you? Yeah, just two weeks. And Patrick, do we have room on the March 2nd agenda?
I, it's a little bit too premature for me to say yes or no, but we will do our best to accommodate.
Why don't, why don't we try to get you back for another discussion on the March 2nd agenda? Where you can just say, well, here's where I am on it. Here's how I'm thinking. And here's, if you have something you've drafted, you can sort of run it by us. Unless you want to wait longer so that we can actually post a text amendment.
I think that we would like to have another opportunity to speak with you because if we can, knowing some of the questions you have now, if I can put some words to paper about operations and propose further how it into existing, existing regulations for your consideration, I will. And then in the meantime, I'll also work with the, with my client and with staff about some other flexible approaches that may be desirable.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for making.
Thank you very much for all of your time and your questions.
Great. Thank you. Could you tell Mr. McRae to come back? Uh-oh, he's left us.
That's okay.
Oh, there's him. He's back.
Okay. Hello, Mr. McRae. Okay. So for our next application, it's Maraville LLC for a final subdivision, 20 Cogniwog Road in the R12. And who is presenting?
I believe it's Mr. Hegney, John Hegney again.
Yeah, there he is. Got him.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. We're looking to avoid the mistake that we made last month with our other subdivision here on Cogniwog Road. So we're preemptively asking for another 90 days to make sure that we get our house in order. I would just note that in addition to the letter that we submitted requesting the additional 90 days, none of the regulations affecting the subdivision approval have been amended since the approval was granted.
Great. Thank you. Does any commissioner have any comments? Does any, anybody in the public have a comment? Please raise your virtual hand. Okay. Does anybody on the commission have an issue with closing this item now? Please wag, say something. I can't see Mr. Hardman, but I'm assuming.
No issue, no issue closing.
Okay. All righty, we will then close this and we will ask Mr. McRae if he would make a motion in this regard.
Okay. 20 Cogniwog Road, PLPZ 2020. Motion to approve the request for an extension of time in accordance with six 279 of the town subdivision regulations to meet the commission's conditions and prepare and file the required subdivision mylar map. All conditions of the original 111720 approvals shall be continued. And the additional extension of time to record the subdivision, subdivision map will be, I think it's June 8, 21. If staff can care, just verify that. And I think that would do it.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, that was, thank you, Mr. Levy. That was a very seconded second. Mr. Hardman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yeski?
Aye.
Mr. Levy, you can just nod. He says yes. Levy is an aye. Mr. McRae?
Aye.
And Miss, and Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. And we go to the next application, Jeffrey F. and Nicole Goldberg and RT Seren Mathur at 22 Hillcrest Lane and 269 Palmer Hill Road for an equal area exchange of 539 square feet. And we're looking for a presenter.
Mr. De.
Mr. DeAndre. There he is. You got him. Okay.
All right. Now I think you have me on.
We do. Go ahead.
All right.
Mr. DeAndre, go ahead.
I'm all ready to go. This is a, an application for a revision of lot lines to accommodate a, the existing as-built location of a pool that the contractor apparently thought more of symmetry rather than zoning. And as a result, the pool and its coping would have been too close to the existing property line from the original lot line between numbers one and two that were approved on map 8877 of the original subdivision. So we are asking for approval of the equal exchange of land between the two parcels, 539 square feet. This would bring the setback from the pool coping to over 18 feet, whereas 15 feet as an accessory structure in the rear yard would be required. The change in the lot line would not affect any of the zoning area, zoning criteria such as area lot shape or frontage. And as the lot number two already has a certificate of occupancy and there has been no impact on drainage or site coverage as a result of the change, we would ask for your approval of the equal exchange and the revision of lot lines. There was a comment from the CEO asking for a setback to the generator that was shown on the zoning location survey that was submitted with the application. And we do show that the setbacks to the pool would be compliant with the proposed revision.
Okay. Any, thank you, Mr. DeAndre. Any questions from the commission? No questions from the commission. Any comment from the public?
And didn't the commission want to know what the reason was?
Yeah, they built the pool in the wrong place, Mr. DeAndre.
Right. I, I mentioned that at the outset, that the contractor, the pool contractor working on his own put the pool out. And if you look at it, it's basically symmetrical with the driveway. I don't really know if that was the reason or how it came to be. But you may recall that not too long ago, the pool on lot number five had a similar situation where I think that the issue of symmetry went out and they didn't realize that they had to make zoning compliance. So when we went out to do the ad build, we said, timeout, boys, you've got a problem here. And at that point, it was in the ground. So we said, you can find a way. And I think that the commission would be favorable on this. It does not affect any of the zoning aspects, as I mentioned. And it's an equal exchange of.
Right. Yep.
Okay. We had no comments from the commission and no comments from the public. Therefore, I propose we close this item. Does anybody object to closing this application now?
No.
No objection. We will then have a motion from Mr. McRae if he would oblige.
Okay, 269 Palmer Hill Road, 22 Hillcrest, application PLPZ 202103. Final re-subdivision in the RA1 zone. Applicant seeking to final re-subdivision to make an equal area exchange of 539 square feet of lot area from lot 2R Hillcrest to lot 1R Palmer Hill to resolve an accessory setback error on lot number one. The commission finds applicant meets the standards of section 258, et cetera, of the town of Greenwich subdivision regulations and section 205 of the building zone regulations and is neither a subdivision or re-subdivision. Both lots were part of final subdivision application PLPZ 201631, approved on March 8th, 2016. No open space or construction site work is proposed with this application.
Comp. Sorry.
Cop. May I?
Yes.
Conservation issue comments, 210, I believe it was, indicating no issues with the proposal. Zoning issue comments to 10 indicating endorsement of the zoning permit signed up for the conditions. DPW issue comments, 12621 stating that all any revision is acceptable. And what lens issue the permit dated 10/26/20 for the original subdivision request. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Prior to the map being recorded, the applicant should note the setback of the generator on lot 2R. And the applicant shall abide by any and all provisions outlined in the original final subdivision PLPZ 201631. And the applicant shall address any outstanding staffer into department issues.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Yeski who seconded. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Levy. Mr. Hardman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Levy? Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. And we move to the next application, which is Heath Coach Koch at final coast, for a final coastal site plan at 10 South Crossway in the R20 and coastal overlay zones. And it is Mr. Hegney again. All right, Mr. Hegney, welcome back.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. It is Heath Koch. How am I doing? I'd like to start with some slides that we put together. If Mr. Lo, LaRoe could bring them up. I'm also joined this evening by Beau Malpass from Warrington Homes and Blithe Yost of Yost Design, our landscape architect. In the audience, we do have our client, the property owner, Heath Koch. In the audience, we do have our client, the property owner, Heath Koch. If we could bring up the slides, I would like to take you through some of the plans that we have here just to address some of the issues that came up at the briefing.
Mr. Hegney, were those provided before the meeting?
They should have been sent in on Friday. If not, I'm happy, I know the commission has reviewed the plans, I'm happy to verbally go through it as well.
Just gonna allow me a second here, it doesn't seem to be in our folder, so I'm wondering if.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to go a cappella in the meantime. On the the plan here, one of the issues that Ms. Anastasio pointed out in her staff report was the interesting zoning setback layout for a lot like this. My favorite thing about this is it really does show Mr. Kutcher's superpower, which is wild consistency. We ran into, we ran into a situation like this back in two thousand eighteen at the end of Shoreham Club Road. And the commission asked, how did you set up the zoning lot here? And Mr. Kutcher said, whenever I run into a road terminus, this is how I determine the lot lines. The commission, who doesn't see as many of these projects as Mr. Kutcher, had some questions. Carrie in the G I S office was kind enough to pull over sixty dead-end streets in Greenwich so that we could look at all of them. Mr. Deandrea had been involved in the development of over a dozen of them to show that Mr. Kutcher's interpretation here is not only consistent, but is the way that we should be doing this.
Oh, I knew we were gonna go there in a nanosecond, okay, go ahead.
I am impressed with the fact that he is, he's like a metronome.
Yeah, that's, that's one, some of the greatest transcriptions that we have on record right there. I think that was an excellent summary of what a value he is to the town, well done, Mr. Hegney.
No, you know, it is, is him being him. So I will say that the lot line layout is not something unusual if you see a lot of these, like Mr. Kutcher or, or Mr. Deandrea. The second thing I will point out here on our site development plan is the existing sea wall that we have on site. I'm well aware, and I think most of the design community is, of the commission's interest in seeing a coastal buffer area included on all of these properties fronting the Long Island Sound. It becomes a little more precarious when you're dealing with properties that have been developed for decades. In particular, here, we have a sea wall that predates D E P's jurisdiction, as pointed out by Mr. Goucher up in Hartford at the, the property line. When you have a sea wall like this, the tidal wetlands are on the other side of the wall, so a buffer is of limited value. That being said, we feel that the buffer that we're proposing here is appropriate for a site that has a history of development, a history of existing lawn and one that is currently separated from the tidal resources that the CAM statutes are trying to protect. If you slide over on the development plan, it's a little low res, if you do zoom in, you see a majority of the top of wall here runs at elevation six.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Hegney, if I could just stop you since you were talking about the sea wall and deep. So their key comment is that you're not showing the full extent of the tidal wetlands along the sea wall. I think rather than, since you don't have D P W yet and you've got to redo some of the drainage, I think the easiest thing would be if you just show, if you just respond to what Mr. Goucher is suggesting and show the extent of the tidal wetlands okay, and I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to illustrate it to us right now. It's not a good consumption of time, so. Now, the next thing he raises, since you are on his topic, is the twelve-inch diameter pipe that discharges on-site storm waters through the sea wall into the coastal waters. The proposal appears to increase the area of runoff that discharges to and through this pipe. I believe that that also, that once you fully addressed your stormwater management plan, you will pick up on that. So I think you could skip, skip that for now and you could just. So if you haven't addressed it, it'll be a different topic, but I think at this point, if you just go ahead and address all of that when you come back. Because that's really basically the scope of his, of his comment.
Certainly, Madam Chair, we believe that addressing D P W's comments will also improve the water quality coming from that outflow and further protect the tidal wetlands that Mr. Goucher is concerned about.
All right. Okay, so if you would go ahead with your presentation?
I'm happy to address any other issues that you raise. We do have our landscape architect with us this evening. She has designed a plan that is heavily focused on native species, as per the D E P guidance and the town's direction. I realize that we are removing a few mature trees, eight on-site, but we are replacing them with over fifty trees that will be replanted on the site that we believe will have a very successful opportunity to grow. We do have the landscaping plan on slide five. We have requested a meeting with the conservation staff to discuss potential enhancements to this. But given the longstanding developed nature of the, of the property, we do feel something similar to this is what's appropriate here.
Well, despite the longstanding developed nature of the property, we're making every effort to increase the environmental sensitivity of redevelopment and it, there's a trade-off here in the commission, as you know, you heard us discuss it yesterday at the briefing session. We understand that the applicant wants to have this layout, but what it does is it creates a very small buffer zone on the sea wall side of the, right by the sea wall. And we would love, as you work with conservation, if you would take into account our new regulation regarding buffer planting and try to enhance it. If you are, I know that they requested that you relocate the pool and that you pull it back. We understand that that might be a difficult request, but we would love to see something more in terms of buffer planting and coastal sensitivity.
We'll certainly endeavor to do that, Madam Chair. We'll certainly meet with the conservation staff. We do have some ideas of enhancing the planting specifically along the sea wall that we're looking to meet with the conservation staff on. The, the site layout, though, is something that we've spent a lot of time working on. We do comply with the zoning standards.
I understand that, I, and I understand that your, your, your client may not wish to make a change to his layout, so we're looking for you to find a way to provide some additional environmental sensitivity and to work with conservation on that. They had also requested that you that you look at trying to keep some of the existing trees, if possible, because of the value of a large tree and that if not, that you consider adding larger trees than presently proposed. And let's think the last comment I have from conservation, Mr. McRae, there was one more, wasn't there? Conservation comment?
Have it here in front of me.
To preserve the trees, the buffer. We understood, you know, you've got this plan, not how we would have wanted you to come in, but there you have it, so we, we'd like to see if you could do more just to be environmentally responsive, Nick, Mr. McRae, is there anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Hegney, they were talking about the driveway and the permeable pavement.
Yeah, that's it.
Applicants should take measures to shorten the area of pavement, potentially considering grass pavers or the guest house parking, so on and so forth. I think you've read, you have these comments, but that's the one thing to look at as well.
We'll certainly look at that, Mr. McRae. Our concern is maintenance responsibilities. Grass pavers do require a specific care, different from the permeable pavers that were, that are integral to our drainage design.
Okay.
To do both may be very difficult.
Well, right, yeah, and that's very understandable. I'm just going through, you know, I'm not seeing a comment specific in the D P W drainage comments on that. No, the area to the south of the, of the, and the sea wall will drain, no, that's, that's into the gravel trench. I'm not seeing that drainage through the sea wall that they, that they mentioned. So we'll just ask, if you'll disconnect the dots, because you'll have to address Mr. Goucher's comments. That's all I got, anybody else got something? Nope, okay, anybody from the public? Nope, okay, does anybody, I would suggest that we leave this application open so that Mr. Hegney may address the issues that are before him. And, and you have quite a few on the drainage summary report, and that would be quite important, given the location of this property. Okay.
Procedure question, Mr. LaRoe, do we have plenty of time, extension-wise on this, or do we need to work with Mr. Hegney? Per my email that you saw, Mr. Hegney.
He's, he would need to give us, if he can't resolve it by the second of March, he would need to give us an extension because it's a must-close, it must decide on three eleven and, but we can extend to five fifteen.
So, Mr. Hegney, can you?
Give us an extension.
Extension now then, because obviously you're not gonna be able to get everything ready in time for the March second meeting.
I would like to see if Mr. Deandrea can pull any rabbits out of hats before I make that commitment, but we'll certainly provide the extension if we cannot provide revisions by March second.
Yeah, because. Abbott would need to have been submitted and pulled out today, so unlikely, just, just to meet Scott's deadlines. And since it's a drainage issue, that, that leaves you, that leaves Mr. Deandrea two weeks of wiggle room.
So we have the ability to apply the executive order, so that is still in force, and we haven't used any of that time.
Yep, so we can just go executive order, but it, you know, he wants to be nice and give us an extension, that's great.
We're happy, we're happy to be nice and give the extension.
Yeah, we'll beat you up less, less than next time. With that, we will leave this application open. And thank you very much, Mr. Hegney, I think this is good night.
Now you've got the varsity team.
Okay, thank you very much.
You've been on fire today.
Yeah, I know, he's been working on this, his kid's old enough now, okey-dokey. Mr. Bazili, we now go to the public hearing. This is if, is Mr. Deandrea staying with us, yes, right?
And Mr. Hegney.
Mr. Hegney, yes, and Senior is joining us.
Yep.
No longer referred to as Big Hegney. Okey-dokey. Mr. Hegney, as soon as you've unmuted, would you have any objection to us combining the discussion on these items and hearing items five and six at the same time?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission members, for the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. That's what we did last time in December, was to combine them. And I, actually, we didn't combine them, because actually, last time, I had asked that you just go ahead and approve the lot line revision as part of this coastal, the site plan and special permit. And you said, no, you have to file for a lot line revision, which we have.
Which you knew.
Which is number four and, or five on the revised agenda. So combining them makes a lot of sense, you're gonna hear them together, they're the same property. It is certainly appropriate to hear them.
Okey-dokey, so, Mr. Hegney, we will now, we will now open both of these items at the same time. Number five, five, Foundation House LLC at one twenty-four Old Mill Road for the, for the re-subdivision. And number six, Foundation House LLC for the final site plan and special permit at one twenty-four Old Mill Road. In our discussion yesterday, as regards this, the subdivision, there was a comment that the map is not ready yet, or, oh, you turned in, you sent in the map today.
We were just fortunate enough this afternoon to receive the map which Mr. Deandrea had prepared. And I did forward that to Mr. LaRoe either shortly before or just at the beginning of this meeting.
It appears we wasted the rabbit on you and not Mr. John Hegney, so.
So the, the other questions that came up in the briefing were why not do this as a merger and make it all one property? And then you would not have the issue of the straddling septic?
Well, we can meet the requirement and the restrictions of maintaining lots that are minimum of ten acres. We're taking essentially four acres from one lot that's twenty-eight acres and adding it to another that's seventeen acres. So actually equalizing them out a little bit more. And while the properties may be partially used together, we don't want to preclude the ability to have other types of development in the future, should should we either not receive approval of the site plan and special permit or if there's a change in circumstances in the future. So we would like to maintain that flexibility. So while meeting those requirements, and I would add that the only reason we're doing this is because the area that we have designated from lot one to lot two is an open field and is appropriate for the septic system. The other area that was also appropriate for the septic system on what is currently lot two is heavily wooded and would have required taking down literally dozens of trees to put in the septic system. What this allows us to do is to not remove any trees and to put it in an open field that currently exists.
Okay.
And that's the only reason that we're coming to you with this.
The topic came up, an ancillary topic at the, at the briefing, that this, that this was under P A four ninety, that this is, that one of the lots is treated as a, as farm space, is that, would that continue? Or is, is open space, would you still, would that lot be maintained on that basis?
Not necessarily, although two of the lots are essentially vacant, the lot on the west and the lot on the right. It's just the, the two lots that really are involved in this particular re-subdivision that are occupied by structures. Such as the main house and the caretaker's cottage, the stables, the pool, the tennis court.
So you would not be considering any creation of open space, any further creation of open space or something to that extent?
No, we're not looking at the creation of any further open space on this, no.
As to.
To the extent that it is currently taxable, it would remain as such.
As to this final site, to the, the site plan issues, I'm gonna just list out some of the questions that we talked about yesterday. First, the issue of the Grist Mill, if we, if we could discuss that. There is a comment that there have been some roads put into the existing conservation space. And there is a major question in the minds of some of us about your proposed use as an educational use when educational events seem to be a very small portion of the activities at your site. We had some thoughts on how you might resolve that, but at this point, the bow, the, the overall structure doesn't seem to be consistent with an educational use. And the final major issue that has come up is just how you will handle large events, and one of the things we had discussed was whether you would consider large events. And one of the things we had discussed was whether you would consider phasing in over time rather than going full bore when you first open. But beginning to if you're gonna have large fundraisers and and very large events that there be some sort of plan so that we see how it works out, we make sure that there's no issues. Uh and then it opens up. And in in asking that, I come to the most important thing that the commission has routinely said about this, which is it's very exciting to us that uh this property might be conserved, that this proposal will conserve and protect the property. Uh we do have these questions, and very specifically, we want to make sure that it adheres to our regulations pertaining to the use. Uh and also that it not create any kind of disturbance in the area uh due to the high volume of events, but that we are very supportive of what your client is trying to do. Uh so with that, um it's the the grist mill, the the roads in the conservation area, events, and the educational use. Any way you want to tackle those?
Well, I actually have them in the reverse order in my notes.
Anyway, anyway, you want to do it.
I'm gonna take the order where that you listed.
No, no, anywhere you want to do it. I I was writing in the in the briefing. On the instruction of my commission, I'm supposed to write down the major issues.
Madam Chair, I will take them in the order that you uh enumerated them. Uh the grist mill uh is something that my client is looking to work with the Greenwich Preservation uh Group and uh the historic uh and the Historical Society. Uh we will reach out to Diane Fox, who penned the uh memo uh to uh the commission and uh and work with her on that. Uh Katie had called me uh this probably two weeks ago now and said that it was a a imminent issue concerning a corner of the grist mill, and my client has taken steps uh to address that. Uh but we do want to work with the Greenwich Preservation Network. Uh and uh my client will be reaching out to Diane Fox to to have a discussion with her and see how we can work on this collaboratively. Uh the.
Katie, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I was I was just gonna ask, number one, what those steps were. And number two, um I mean, obviously, the Historic District Commission, Historical Society Network, they're all the same group of people, so I don't think it it really matters. At the at the end of the day, it's all the same the same people, which is terrific. Um but I'm not I haven't examined the declaration closely enough to see um if there was a specific entity with that was mentioned in that document. Um it's not that it particular matters. Like I said, practically, it's the same group, so I don't think it I think it matters, but just procedurally. Um whether there was whether there is a the right course. And as I had mentioned to the commission at the briefing, I think it was a briefing or some meeting, that the idea behind wanting to have this that discussion in the meeting tonight was to find out in a little bit more detail about about what what when you say when you say eminent issues and being resolved, if you just kind of expand on that a little bit in terms of what that really means. Just since we are recording this, I think it would be good to have it documented.
Yes, that there was a corner of the building uh closest to the street uh that uh appeared to be open to the weather. Uh and uh that was shored up with a uh a corner uh piece uh and some siding so that it was uh not open to the weather. Uh and that was what I understood from my conversation with Katie as to what was what needed to be addressed. My client did that right away. And as I said, uh we will work with all of these historic preservation groups. Uh and particularly with the with Mrs. Fox uh on responding to any of the the concerns that they have. Uh in the declaration, I believe it was the uh Historical Society uh that was the one that was going to monitor this on an annual basis. Uh uh my client just purchased this property last year, so uh this is one of the the things that she is looking at. Uh but I I'm afraid that o- over the the last decade or so uh no attention or a little attention uh was paid to the structure uh before my client purchased it. So we do have to analyze uh where we go from here and and how best to handle that. And and that's the discussion we want to have uh with Mrs. Fox.
Okay.
Uh the uh the dirt road or path. Uh as I said, my client purchased this last year and has not put in any paths or dirt roads. Um I had reached out to Mr. LaRoe to find out where this dirt road actually is, cuz I couldn't figure it out from looking at the description in the conservation comments. Um and I guess the staff person is uh out of town, so to speak, and uh and not available to expound on it. Uh I did ask uh our landscape architect, uh Mr. Conti, if he was aware of any roads that had been put in or uh anything that was different from what he has as his existing conditions back in February of last year, and uh he did not believe that there were any new roads that had gone in. But we'll 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 look at that. Uh it could have been done uh by one of the prior owners. Uh but it certainly isn't something that has happened in the last year. Uh and the 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 main part of what I wanted to get into with you was the use. Uh because I'm not hearing from anywhere uh that there's uh something negative about this particular proposal.
No, but you still have to comply with our regulations, and you an educational use gotta look like an educational use. I mean.
Yeah, and and I know most of you have walked the property. Uh you've seen what a great piece of of land it is uh that the event barn that we're proposing is eleven hundred feet from Old Mill Road. Uh that it has a long lengthy uh road network between uh the road and uh the event barn. Uh and that we're uh nine hundred feet from the closest house. So uh in terms of impacts, uh one of the impacts is that potential uh is on the road network. And uh before we get into the actual use, I thought it would be helpful to hear from Mr. Adler, our traffic engineer, who has done a a a study that involved not just looking at intersections the way the commission normally sees a traffic study, but seeing what the actual usage of Old Mill.
Wait, so wait, you're you changed topics. Are we gonna talk about whether or not you're an educational use, or are we gonna talk about traffic?
Well, I'm mixing up your order a little.
Okay, well, it's fine, but you started to talk about the educational use.
And then I'm gonna come back to number three, which I think is really the crux of the discussion we need to have.
Yes.
But part of that is how does the any activities on the site? How does it, if in any way, does it affect the uh the road network? And that's what I wanted Mr. Adler to go through a study because it's a little different than what you normally see. You normally don't see, well, how many cars go by on a road each day, and how many cars are you adding to that? And does that impact the utilization uh and the activity on that road at all? And so that's what I thought would be helpful to have Mr. Adler go through that for you. And then we can talk about the use and and Mr. Sternlicht is here uh to go through that with you as well.
Hello, Mr. Sternlicht. Uh okay, and is Bernie Bernie Adler's up? Okay, hello, Mr. Adler. He's still muted. And hello, Mr. Adler, you're good to go now. You're you're unmuted. Mr. Adler?
Uh so perhaps if Bernie's having some difficulty getting on uh the Zoom meeting, uh we can uh go back to your original order, Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll do that.
Talk about the use.
All right. So Mr. Adler is unmuted, so he at some point, he may be able to find his, you know, his volume or whatever and pipe up. And then we'll go back to him. But okay, go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
Uh uh as as part of going over with you what is planned at Foundation House, uh we sent over uh some sample calendars for your review. And um uh it was not our intent to make it sound like this was going to be all about large events, because that's not really uh where the foundation uh is gonna have its focus. So I I wanted to ask uh Ms. Sternlicht to walk through uh these samples to give you a description of how this would operate and uh and perhaps then we can get to a better understanding of this as an educational use uh for the property. Uh Mimi, could you uh unmute?
There we go. Um everyone, um nice to see you again.
Hello. Thank you again for allowing us to do the walkthrough.
Oh, that was fun. Thank you for coming. Um is the presentation screen, can you can you put on the those colorful pictures that were part of the deck?
Yeah, actually, I didn't put it in uh this part of the display. Uh Pat.
Oh, okay.
It is part of the uh the staff materials.
If you go, it's in the if you, yeah, I can do it.
Uh Mr. LaRoe, uh page two eighty-two of the staff report, post that report.
Two eight two?
Yes.
Bear with me one second.
While we're waiting, I can just start talking about what you're gonna see.
That's probably a good idea, Mimi.
So what I did is I took kind of three sample months, you know, in the in the dead of winter, I think we're gonna have a lot less activities. In the summer, we're gonna have a lot of people that want to be using the property for, you know, for the outdoor space as well as the indoor space. Um so I kind of took three sample months. I think I did uh whatever, uh January, June, and August, or something like that, just to give examples of what kind of things we'd have. Um and then was showing on it, um we're gonna try to do three times a year a an artisan residency program where artists will come and live at the main house for three to six weeks. Um depending what time of year it is and school schedules and things like that, where we are partnering with RISD, the Rhode Island School of Design, um to help us with this. Um and they're gonna be doing work that is um kind of rooted in.
This is what you were referring to?
Yeah, exactly. So these these are just kind of calendars for you to see size of events, frequency of events, types of events. Prof, you know, things that I would be a paying event versus non-paying events. Um so the little piggy bank is paying event, everything else is not paying event. And so I wanted to kind of describe to you what kinds of things you're looking at, because anything with a star would be something that would be open to the public to be coming in for. So like a sustainable cooking demo with um you know, there there's so many people working now in the sustainable food space and um, you know, regenerative agriculture. So those would be something where we could have people in the community come and and learn about um sustainable cooking and about our environment. Um whenever you see something like uh paint with the AIR um as part of the artisan residency program, I'm um requiring that each artist um gives at least a two-hour workshop during their stint. Um so that'll be six of them during each residency to work um with any local residents interested in art or interested in hearing about art. It could be a writer um talking about their work and and working with people on their own projects. It could be a painter, it could be a sculptor working in sustainable materials. Um so that is another educational thing that's also kind of dovetailing with the Artist of Residence Program. Um then I have things like SCOL, Nexus, Israel Aid, Acumen, Six Systems Change. Those are all, I don't know um what everyone's familiar with um in those areas, but um Israel Aid's mission is to support people affected by humanitarian crises. Uh they partner with local communities around the world to provide urgent aid, aid, assist in recovery, and reduce the risk of future disasters. Um SCOL is a foundation that drives large-scale change by investing in connecting and celebrating social entrepreneurs and their innovators who help them solve the world's most pressing problems. A lot of them have to do with poverty. Uh Nexus Global um is really gets together impact investors and social entrepreneur to make um promising global solutions for the next generation. Uh Gratitude Railroad that's on there is a fairly local organization. They're a community of investors um who are through profitable deployment of financial, intellectual, and human capital. They try to solve environmental and social problems. Um so those are the kind of typical things that people and that are gonna be meeting here and convening and convening together to help um promote systems change. Um Oceanic um is a works on the world's oceans and is an environmental organization. They want to do a planetary film festival um to teach people, and that'll be another open to the public event to teach people about um ocean plastics and the the crises facing our environment right now. Um so those, all of the things that you see um other than the piggyback things are basically um educational in in different respects. Um we've all had also had a lot of interest from uh the Fairfield Community Foundation. They want to partner with us and hold events here. They feel like it would be a great um resource for them. Um the Bruce Museum has already asked if they could do their gala here. That would require an event space. Um so has Save the Children, and the Historical Society um had asked if they could do their hundred-year anniversary in twenty twenty-two here. Um you know, those are the kinds of organizations that we're hoping to to bring in, to promote, to be able to share ideas and and you know, promote our mission of uh health and wellness and in the environment, the community, and mental health. So I don't know if that kind of.
Uh Mrs. Sternlicht, uh something, say, for example, um the Regen Ag convening.
I'm sorry.
Um the Regen Ag convening?
The generative agriculture?
Yes, yes. Um is that a is that a like a teaching seminar or I I kind of will just pick that one for as an example?
Sure.
But um I think what I'm trying to kind of get my arms around here is is that the things that are actually kind of represented here, how how they dovetail into a teaching environment.
So education is not necessarily teaching. Education is promoting ideas and and learning from each other. And so when you have convenings and people are coming with all different ideas on a topic, like we might have something on on sustainable energy, and you'd have people representing solar and wind and methane gas and um, you know, uh carbon capture and all those kind of things. You bring them together, and it's an educational environment where people all learn free to from each other. Um and then, you know, things like you know, the Oceanic doing their film festival is certainly educational. So there are things that are based in mission-driven um learning, but this is not a school. And if it was a school, you'd never it would never happen here, because people would be coming and going all the time in large, large masses, and that's that's not what anybody wants for this property. Um so it's not a school. Um education, you know, is is comes in all different forms.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments from the commission?
I I have a question. Uh with regard to the the uh what I'll refer to as the sample calendar. I I'm assuming this is uh presented as somewhat representative of what you envision.
Yeah.
At least going forward, just a rough kind of, you know, counting up hours and things like that. The so-called educational part seems to be a rather still a rather small uh percentage of the total. Um in sort of the low twenty percent of the total number of hours represented on those three months. Um is there a more expansive um educational uh more expansive educational activity um anticipated?
You know, I I wouldn't I wouldn't say that that's that that's true. I mean, when you when you count hours, um you know, the you uh the Esther Sloan, who's had partnerships for the UN, um Sustainable Development Goals, she wants to come and do a full-day retreat. That's gonna be a full day of. That's going to be a full day of education and learning. You know, you're going to have some things that are retreats that are full days, and you're going to have something that's, you know, two hours. You know, we'd like to be able to have the Round Hill Association come and have their meeting there, because it's, it's a community space. You know, part of being in a community and offering community is, you know, may not be educational, but it's really nice to kind of gather back country for a picnic. You know, so, so there's a whole community aspect of this that you can't really label as educational, but getting to know your neighbors is actually kind of a, a great thing, so.
Okay, well, so I, I was just, I, I, just conceptually, this is, it's not a real calendar, I understand, but it's, it's, it's arguably representative. And if I hear you correctly, then there will be additional activities from, from what you've shown here that will be arguably under the umbrella of educational. Have I got that right, or?
You know, it, it's, it's actually funny. I'm, I'm kind of betwixt and between, because if I do have activities that are, you know, bigger for more people and broader, then you're going to tell me that I can't do it, because it's, it's the traffic and the environment and everything. So I'm trying to keep it small and I'm keep convenings on, you know, under wraps. I mean, I definitely would love to do more of this programming, but then.
The commission, the commission, the commission members keep reminding me, Ms. Sternlich, that if you were to just be a private house and wanted to have a wedding for your friends every weekend, you could, and that we need to let go a little bit of what, and, and think about what you could do. And the couple of commissioners raised that yesterday when we were talking about this. So the, the biggest sticky point right now is that, that the use that you've, you know, that we have to follow the regulations and, and the use for which you've applied as an educational use. Then we, I, I think, I don't think it's going to be hard for you to phase in activities anyway if we ask you to do that, because you're not going to hit the ground running till, you know, you build a reputation and you have all the spaces done and everything. So we'll have, you'll have a chance to manage the events and the traffic. But the key question is, if you're doing this change of use to educational, and it isn't so much a concern, what I kept saying is, it's not so much a concern about your place, it's the 15 applications that follow you and say they're educational, and we've had problems. I mean, we've been, we've been sued for, and, for things that were not, didn't really fit. So I, we had talked yesterday, Mr. Hegney, I'm sure that your reporter passed it on to you. We had talked about if you made yourselves a civic center, was it? Or a community set, what's the definition? We found a community center, right?
Yeah, I mean, just while you're looking for that definition, I mean, although one could wedding every weekend, one doesn't, and that's why you don't have to write that type of thing into the regulation, because there, you know, there's the spirit of the regulations and understanding as to what, what something means within the regulation. And so just to push back on that a little bit here, this is not, this is a residential use to some degree, but it's being asked to be a different type of use within a residential zone. So, you know, without some sort of limits, theoretically, they could be a wedding here every weekend. So I think it's, it's not, you know, and, and again, that, that wouldn't meet the spirit of what you're doing, but considering it is something that, like you just said, Ms. Alvin, doesn't apply to just Mimi Sternlich's operation. It applies to the, the future owners of the property or other owners that may want to come in with, with the, with the same thing in town. But either way, I think you heard the discussion yesterday, I presume, Mr. Hegney, where we discussed an option that we think is more fitting.
Only junior was, junior was at the discussion.
I'm sure, I'm sure junior relate to senior.
I, I not only get the comments, but I get the comments as to who made those comments. My reports are very detailed. And, and I, I did see that Mr. Lowe, for example, I was questioning the lack of educational events that, Madam Chair, you asked, is there a use more closely that fits in what we're looking to do here? Katie, you mentioned a club. Club really doesn't fit what.
No civic association, she.
I was only comparing, I wasn't suggesting that this be a club. I was only saying that clubs and religious institutions have weddings also. So in other words, just because it's an institutional use doesn't mean it shouldn't or couldn't have a wedding if you compare it to other institutional uses, but I do think there should be limits.
But if you look at the uses. So if we look at the uses, what it seemed to me more like is a civic association. Ms. Sternlich was talking about systems change. And that's civic, that's civic engagement, if you will. So I could more easily, and the exchange of ideas is more of a civic activity than an educational activity. I mean, if you, I, I Googled after, of course, after the briefing, I looked up all the dictionary definitions of education I could find, you know, of course I did. And nothing really, it's imparting knowledge. And yes, okay, if you have a session on how to, how to affect large group change and, and systems change, yes. And if you, you're, but it's where you draw the line. And if you could make a mushier basket, was where we were headed with the commission yesterday. If your basket could be bigger so that it does, it encompasses more. And could not a civic association have weddings? Well, yeah, why not? And they could have picnics, right? That's the thing, a civic association would have picnics. And it wouldn't be for profit, which I think is the purpose. You've got fundraising stuff, you've got piggy bank items, but they aren't for a profit purpose, but rather to sustain your enterprise. So, so where we were headed is, wow, this one could work, and we'd sure like to help you make it work. And would you think about that? And, and if you say to me, as a long experienced land use attorney, no, you're crazy. It can't be a civic association. Okay, I was just trying to help, because I wasn't seeing it as educational.
Margarita, I have one suggestion.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a concept in the tax code of sort of a limited profitability company. Somebody who knows the tax code far better than I could come up with it. But I remember a couple of months ago saying, I think this enterprise needs to make some money or it runs at risk of falling into disrepair.
Absolutely.
So why not make this a, you know, a, a, a business application? Zone it as a, as a business unless there are unnecessarily restrictive parts to it.
You can't.
Residential.
It's a residential zone, and you can't zone it as a business. That's the problem.
And as we originally proposed this.
Can't be, unless you want to rewrite our regulations again, and, you know, okay, but you will get, you will run into problems with all the backcountry people if you allow businesses in the backcountry.
Well, I just think it's worth thinking this through, because I think it'd be a disservice in 50 years if this thing fell into disrepair, because it was so restricted in terms of how they might generate cash flow to reinvest.
Agreed, 100% agree. And that's why we were saying yesterday, what about the civic association? And an educational, both the civic and educational uses would be able to raise funds to sustain itself. No problem there. The question is, when the events exceed the core purpose? And a civic seemed a little more flexible if you could get your mind around it, Mr. Hegney. I don't know if it's feasible, we debated it yesterday. It's more flex, flexible, because you could have more socially, social change-related, which it seems is a major area of focus for this, is social change. That's more of a civic endeavor, I, as I see it. But I don't know, if you guys want to noodle on this, Mr. Mr. Hardman's right. We, we recognize that you need to raise funds, and we recognize that you have to be self-sustaining. At the same time, our regulations don't permit a full-on business use in the RA, in the residential, in the RA four. And I do believe we would be drawn and quartered if we, if we allowed you to be a full-on business use. That's my guess, I could be wrong.
It, it may be something, it may be something, if I may say something, where we need for the, the purposes of this application is to define better what educational means, to increase the size of the umbrella and, and therefore permit the applicant to include, you know, a broader array.
Okay, so I know you guys, I know the applicant wants to say something, but okay, so that's the problem. And Mr. Lowe, it's your slippery slope issue. So they redefine the word education from everything I could find in the dictionary and define it to fit them. And now the next applicant that comes in redefines having a shopping mall. You know what I mean? It really should fit pretty well into the bucket without having to stretch a lot. So I was trying to find a way, either it becomes very much more educational or we find this, we find another way, civic associate, I don't know. I mean, Mr. Hegney, Mr. Yaski wants to say something, and I think Ms. Sternlich has been waiting to say something. So Mr. Yaski, you go first.
Well, I actually wanted to ask Ms. Sternlich, is, is, do you have a 501(c) kind of an organ, not-for-profit kind of definition already? I mean, it sounds like you probably have something like that already.
Yeah, well, I'm actually, I have a fiscal sponsor, which is the Giving Back Fund. So we're considered a project of the Giving Back Fund, but yes.
And that's a not-for-profit?
Yeah.
Am I missing something, Madam Chair? I mean, this is a charity, right?
But our regs don't say you can have cha, any charity, you can have. I'm just, I'm stuck with our regulations.
But on the, but, but to Ms. Yaski's point, I mean, how is this not a community house that the way that Ms. Alvin read it? I mean, you read all the things that Ms. Sternlich has said in her report here, and they're extremely similar to what happens at the Round Hill Community House. So how is this not that? I mean, that seems to fit very nicely with no tweaking needed.
So I, I don't, I don't personally care what, what we go under, as long as we can do these activities.
And we're trying to help, because our issue.
Make, make, make no mistake, we support you.
Yeah, our issue is the 10 people that come after you, and the person who says, oh, well, we're an educational use, but they just happen to look a lot like a shopping mall. You know, I'm exaggerating, I'm just making a point that you're sort of, you've got to, you've always got to think of what's coming down the pike, and that people are always going to look for loopholes. And Mr. Hegney himself has stood before us and said, well, in 2015, you approved blah, blah, blah. So now I should have this.
I only seek consistency, Madam Chair.
Of course, and that's what I'm seeking here, because I know how smart the attorneys are. So if you could get your mind around a community center operated by a civic association, you could have all the events and fundraisers you wanted and be like the Round Hill and have learning, and you're 501(c) three, you're a charitable operation, you're not-for-profit. And I think you could do it, but you're the land use attorney. You know, you're the one who knows these things.
Well, when you look at our special permit uses in the residential zones.
Sitting here staring, see?
They are very limited.
I realize that.
And when we were looking at how foundation house would fit within any of those. It's, it's a nonprofit, it's a 501(c) three.
Right.
How, how does it fit? Well, much of what Mimi has been looking at are educational uses, having residents, artists and residents, having seminars, having films, having symposiums, those kinds of things, when, and mainly with small groups. You'll, you'll see throughout the calendar that we use as an example, they're primarily small groups that are getting together, and those are 25 or less. And so it, it's very much an interactive educational experience. Having said that, it's also a community activity, because people are getting together to discuss issues that affect the community and that they are concerned about. And so, yes, it's educational, yes, it's community. And I think it can fit in either, as long as it is a nonprofit. And as we've said, it.
And it's, and as long as the definition that we give it fits the activities, the, it, it's the one that fits what Ms. Sternlich is proposing to do that best fits it. I, that's what we're looking for, and that also does not create a negative precedent, precedent for the area in terms of another application that could come in. And you know the one I'm referring to, that was, you know, that we've had significant litigation about uses that didn't quite fit. So, and you know, we have, so, so it's whatever you guys think. The commission wants to help with this, we would really like, we, you know.
Yeah, I have to say, on, on the one that you're, you may be referring to, the appellate court of the state of Connecticut.
Upheld us.
I'd agree with you.
Yes.
And, you know, the, the example that I.
The neighborhood is still not, not happy, which means that the neighborhood still had concerns about the use. So whatever you think works better to describe what Ms. Sternlich is proposing, and that better enables, as Mr. Hardman pointed out, the long-term sustainability of this property, we would support, as long as it, you know, the activities fit the name, we're good.
Mr. Hegney, is there, is there a downside to this community concept?
I, I don't believe so, and I want to give you two examples of community centers that we currently have, one of which you're, you are looking at having a new facility on. We have the Western Greenwich Civic Center in Glenville. That's actually in a residential zone. And we have the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center, which is also in a residential zone. And many of the activities that they're looking to do are similar to some of the activities we're looking to do in terms of community use, community gatherings, making a place available for people to meet, be they civic organizations or, or neighborhood organizations. And, and this is looking to provide that same type of, of, of environment and facility to allow these kinds of civic and community and neighborhood activities to occur. And in a much different setting, granted, than, than downtown Glenville or, or in, in Old Greenwich. But, but, you know, the more I think about it, and the more I think about what your discussion has been with, with the new plan for the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center, it's very much akin to what we're looking to do here.
And our whole point, and we had that same discussion with the civic center, was when we had objection that it didn't have more sports facilities, we said this is a civic center. It wants to have events, it wants to have gatherings, it wants to have classes, it wants to have education. It is a community center, it is not a full-on megaplex, whatever they call it, athletic facility. So that's, yeah, that's exactly where we came out.
Fieldhouse.
The fieldhouse, and that's why we, when, when we got the protest for not having the fieldhouse, we said that is not the purpose of this structure. Uh, Ms. Sternlich, I'm sorry, you wanted to say something?
I, I just want to make sure that when something becomes a civic center, that it doesn't have to be open to the public.
Yeah, and, yeah, right.
We're going to have people, you know, in residency sleeping there. We can't have people randomly walking around.
Agreed, agreed. And I, I think Mr. Hegney has to look at that, and if it doesn't work, then we go back to making it work as an educational. But I just felt, we felt like potentially community center gave you more flexibility. Certainly when Round Hill does classes, you can't just stroll into them if you haven't signed up, and you can't just walk into the building if you're not part of that event.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to say, it's all highly managed. You can't just walk in or.
Right.
Ever, I mean.
A community center might have to be managed by a group of people too. I'm not sure who's, what the management issues are.
I believe, I believe Ms. Sternlich has a board already.
Mr. Hegney. I think one of the things that you might want to explore is section.
Mr. McCrory, I'm having difficulty.
Oh, sorry. Section five, six, six dash five, 43.3. That's Services and Social Club. And I think actually in conjunction with that, looking again at 694.2, and I think you might find something there that may dovetail to what Mrs. Albon is talking about, putting it in, fitting it in the bucket. What I, what I'm seeing here from the presentation and previous comment is that this is almost to me a, a country club without the recreational component to it. comment is that this is almost to me a, a country club without the recreational component to it. Where the country club can offer meeting rooms and spaces for gatherings, can host a wedding or a party at the same time. It's that kind of, kind of opportunity to do multi-functions in one space. But you don't have the, you don't have the boat slips. You don't have the golf course. You don't have the tennis associated with it.
You don't have members.
Yeah, members, yeah.
There are no members in the six, six ninety-four eight two says not open to the general public. So I think you could work it.
Yeah, the more we're having this discussion, the more I think that it actually.
If it can work.
Yeah, I think Archibald Center in Byram, that's also in a residential zone that has been used for many different things over the years. Including providing relief as an adjunct school for New Lebanon, when they were overcrowded and needed space for the kindergarten. So it, it's, it's multifunctional. Even more so than I think the country club, because there are many different aspects that are being offered to the community. That are not just educational, but are, are just as important for the, for the well-being of a neighborhood and community. So.
Right. That fine line of ninety-four, two, not open to the pub, general public. From understanding this is that it's not open to the general public, but at times the general public is invited in.
Yeah.
So, you know, how, you know, what kind of a fine line is that? If I have a club. But it's not open to the public, but every once in a while I do open it. Is that actually not fitting with the regulation? Or is that just an expansion of the regulation?
I, I think it's all-inclusive there, Mr. McCray. I, you know, and I'll just give you another part of what Mimi's looking to do here. The riding trails are available for people riding their horses or for walkers. That would be open from dawn to dusk to the general public. But the other facilities are going to have specific uses. So if there's an event in, in the barn, that'll be something different than a gathering of a neighborhood gathering or meeting in, in the main house. And I, I would also add that it would only be one activity occurring at any given time. So if you're having a, a small gathering in the main house, you're not having at the same time, an event going on in the, in the barn.
Mr. Hegney.
I wanted to clarify for you.
Mr. Hegney, are there any restrictions with regard to the management and ownership of a civic oriented or community oriented entity? Because obviously it's important here to, that Mrs. Stern like had maintained control over this enterprise. So it, would that, would, would that be feasible? With that, that the nomenclature of civic or community?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. And Ms. Goss made the point of, you know, a need to have a board for an organization. And I think that that's something that, that we could incorporate in, into the whole program for this.
It's always worth having other people to help you with the work.
We're, we're, we're seeking volunteers even this evening.
That's all we are here.
They say they're working too hard.
Probably their chair is driving them to, too many meetings.
So. We never got Mr. Adler. So you're, you're open to it. I mean, whatever works. Oh, he's got his hand up. Mr. Adler?
Unfortunately, his audio isn't working.
Oh, is that why he has his hand up?
Well, I, he, he seems to have his mic off, but no connection. So.
Okay, have we suggested he call in?
We have not.
Okay. Should we do that? So we can?
Well, I guess the question is, does the commission feel that there needs to be a discussion on this now? Or do we want to?
Well, I, I think we had sort of finished the use discussion unless I jumped too quickly. It seemed like where we had gotten was that Mr. Hegney and Ms. Stern like, we're going to consider what the proposal looks like and what best fits it and let us know.
Yes, I, I think we've had a, a healthy discussion on the use issue. And I did want Bernie to, to share his report with you because I thought it was something different than the commission has seen before and would be, would be of interest. Not just for this project, but in, in general.
But can we tell him to call or?
I'm not expecting a vote this evening, Madam Chair.
No, I know, but.
We can certainly bring him back at, at the next meeting and he can view that or answer any questions that, that any of you have rather than making a presentation on it.
Okay. All right. If he sends us the stuff, we'll be happy to look at it and funnel comments through staff.
We, we did submit it both electronically and in paper and it's the, 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 the written portion, although he has hundreds of pages that cover the, the, the data collected. But it, it's about a dozen or so pages that, that go into it in depth and provide some what I think are very compelling charts. That I was looking to have Bernie go over with you.
Okay, well, let's, I'll tell you what, maybe Pat, you could email him and send him the phone number. And in the meantime, if, does the commission want to add anything else or could we turn to public comment?
A book, please.
Okie dokie. So it does anybody in the public wish to comment on this application? Please raise your virtual hand, Mr. O'Handlon. You are first on deck.
And then Mr. O'Handlon has asked that Mr. Pruner speak after him.
Well, no, Mr. Pruner only gets once a night. No, just kidding.
It's fair, Madam Chair. It's fair.
All right, Mr. Pruner, you're on, you're, so we've got Mr. O'Handlon is up and Mr. Pruner's on deck.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. I represent the Round Hill Association. And you may recall that I addressed the commission back in December. And, and had a bunch of substantive comments to make on behalf of the, the association. If, if you all can ask a question, Madam Chair, are you, is the commission not planning to vote on this tonight and to keep the hearing open?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's good to know because I have a, a process issue.
Okay.
On following the hearing on, in December, the Round Hill Association Board met with me several times. And we prepared a lengthy letter to Mr. Hegney. We sent it to him on January thirteenth. You have a copy of it. It addressed a number of the concerns that, that you all had raised and that we raised about the activities on the, on the site. We have not gotten a substantive response to that. I reached out twice, three times to Mr. Hegney. Each time I was assured that I would get a response and I didn't. And then he called me and told me that they were not going to respond to that letter. Now, I respect his right to disagree with the terms, but I don't respect his right to tell my client that they don't want to engage in any discussion. The letter that you all have from him in response to my letter, I saw for the first time today because he didn't send it to me. So I'm sitting here on behalf of my clients frustrated because I'm not helping them. And they're not being heard through my services. Because we tried to reach out substantively on these issues five weeks ago and have been stonewalled. And I use that term just because that's the result. I don't know what the intent is. There's a lot of common ground here. My clients want to support what Ms. Stern like proposes, but they have genuine concerns about the activities on that site under the legal regime that they can operate. And if you are going to continue this hearing, which I'm glad, I would request respectfully that you admonish Mr. Hegney and his client to meet with my clients to discuss it before we come back.
I admonish, I admonish a lot of people, Mr. O'Handlon, but if somebody does not want to answer your letter. I don't think it's my role to admonish them for not, not doing that.
You know what, Madam Chair, I think you underestimate your power.
What I think you could do, of course I have, but what I think you could do, Mr. O'Handlon, is you could raise all of your issues to the commission. And then we could turn to Mr. Hegney and we could ask for a response to those specific issues. But I am not going to, if he has not been reading his etiquette books, I am not.
Exercise of your time or our time, or would it be more?
It.
It'd be better if we did that, if we did that cooperatively and then came back.
I am not going to comment on that. What I'd like to know is if you can raise the issues that are primary for the Round Hill Association. We will be happy to do our best to address them.
Okay, let me run through them real quick. First of all, I have not seen, and there's been conflicting testimony before you as to whether this is a 501(c)(3). And I would ask you to require the applicant to provide evidence of the IRS letter conferring that status on it. Because otherwise you are being asked to confer a special permit on an entity that's not entitled to it. Second of all, there's a number of conditions that are set forth in that letter that I think are, each one of them are something that the commission should consider in imposing in a special permit. They require that there be a dialogue established between the, the non, the special permit, non-residential holder and the town and the, the neighbors so that issues can be addressed. Third is, to the extent that I can glean from the information submitted, this, this community, this, this property looks like it's going to be conducted as an event site. There are more events taking place on the weekends potentially than there are during the week. And potentially you could have four major events on one weekend without any protection or concern for the neighbors. So I just think that this has not been thought out sufficiently for you all to confer the special permit use that's being sought. And that the best way to resolve that is for the, the parties to get together and to resolve it. If you look at what, and I can only rely on this, on the summary provided by the staff, there, there could be four major events in a single weekend here. Now, that's preposterous, I think. But it's possible. And that doesn't give any neighbors any, any concern. What, what the Round Hill Association proposed was that there be a pause weekend between major event weekends. We were amenable to even larger events than what are being proposed because we understood that Ms., again, hearing through the grapevine, because we haven't had direct discussions. Hearing that there was a desire to have gala events. We believe we've provided any number of, of, of ways in which there's more latitude there to be found. But without having that discussion, it's, it's impossible to find that. As it's suggested, there's only three days during a given month where there will be a weekday activity. I'm sorry, four, three days at thirty people and one day at a hundred. Again, it, echoing your all's questions, it does not look like it's an education function, but it looks like it's, it's an event. And respectfully, you know, if, if it's a foundation, I mean, if it's a, if it's a charitable institution, it should not have to raise its, its operating money through the use of its property. It has, I assume it has philanthropic sources. There may be Mr. Stern like's own sources. I, I don't know, but that's typically how this operates. It should not have to run to support itself. That's not what the purpose of this is. That's a business. And so we're, we're just concerned that, that again, this has not been.
Well. The Bruce Museum has its gala to raise money, et cetera. Five oh one c three's not-for-profit operations. We're all really clear that everybody's got to raise money in order to, to fund, fund their activities. They just can't be a for-profit. And we've had that discussion with the applicant. The question of the events and the event frequency and the impact on the neighborhood, they're going to address at the next meeting. And what was your next issue, Mr. O'Handlon?
If you, if you ask the applicant to take the letter that we sent and address all of the issues we raised, I think you'll see. Well, I have experiences. You will see that it provides a, a, a modicum of, of organization that you all can feel comfortable granting a special permit.
Yes, and we've talked to the applicant about that this evening. And what we suggested was that they phase in. And that we have a, we work out something where they don't hit the ground full on, you know, at a run. And that we make sure that it works well with the neighborhood and that it doesn't, it doesn't create a major disturbance. So we've asked the applicant to continue to flesh that out. Unfortunately, their traffic consultant is having technical issues tonight and could not provide more information. But the, our record, as you know, is open and you can access what Mr. At, what Mr. Hegney has submitted from Mr. Adler regarding the, the trips generated.
But trips generated is a different issue. This goes to use and goes to the intensity of the use and goes to, because nobody's.
Trips generated. And also lights and sound, yes. And we would restrict all that.
What, but I'm talking about the intensity of the use. Four major meetings in one weekend. There has to be some better organization than what's being proposed. And, and we've asked that that be provided. The, the hours, if it stops at midnight, that means the site's being emptied at 1:00 a.m. by the staff. If it, there, there's just a number of issues that we have raised in there. And, and if they, if they address them, then I think you would, you would be able to see what our concerns are and we dress it without taking up more of your time, but.
So we have, so we've raised another, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Handlon, I'm just passing on to. I'm sorry, Mr. O'Handlon, I, I have a short-term memory issue. I'm passing on to Mr. Hegney every issue you raise as you raise it. So hours of operation is an issue, Mr. Hegney. And general use of the property. Go ahead, Mr. O'Handlon.
The 501(c)(3) status.
You asked.
I'd like to see demonstration, the proof of that. That there should be a foundation website and calendar so that people can see what's going on there and plan their own events. What happens if, if one of the neighbors wants to have a wedding on his property? And then there's two weddings going on at the same time.
It happens in a residential use, Mr. O'Handlon.
You know what, respectfully, respectfully, it doesn't.
But if I'm having a wedding next weekend, my neighbor could be having a wedding too. And if we don't talk to each other, it'll just happen.
And I assume you and your neighbor would be talking to each other and that wouldn't happen. And that's what.
Say we don't get along and we haven't told each other, we're both having weddings. I mean, you have to be fair. You have to let.
We're asking them to be a good neighbor.
And I, I recognize that. And that's what we want as well.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. O'Handlon, the letter that you speak of, did you pass that to staff?
I only passed it to staff when Mr. Hegney refused to answer it.
Okay.
Okay, so then we have your, 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 your questions in written form ready?
Yes, it's, it's, it's there. You have it. I confirm with Patrick that it's in the.
We have it.
Yeah, it's, Mr. McCray, it's like page two eighty-three, I think of, I mean, a five, something. I'll find it. I'm sorry.
I can tell you, it starts at page two hundred and fifty-three of the staff.
Thank you.
Two fifty-three?
Right. And Mr. Mr. Hegney's response curiously is at page twelve of the staff report. So again, there's no, I wasn't even aware he had filed a, a, a letter because he didn't give it to me. But again, I just, you know, I speak from some experience that if this use is to work in, in a residential neighborhood, there has to be a, a communication with the neighbors. I will step out of it. I don't want to be part of it. I'm not trying to impose.
I, I am.
That's what's essential. And if, if you allow this to go forward like this, I'm not trying to, to be the hall monitor complaining.
O'Handlon, I feel like you didn't listen to any of the discussion we had with the applicant before you began speaking.
I listened to the entire discussion.
Well, Mr. O'Handlon, the only, we asked whether it was a 501(c)(3). We asked about the events. We asked about the traffic. We asked about the use and the applicant.
Didn't answer on the five oh one.
No, and we asked that the applicant return at the next meeting that they come, they come prepared to answer this question of use. And that was the agreement. So we have gotten to most of your issues. I think that the one you raised about the number of events on a weekend and the possible impact on the neighborhood is not one we had specifically asked. And now we have, and we're asking that as well. But it's consistent with some of the other issues we raised. Well, we're very cognizant that there's a trade. Well, we're very cognizant that there's a trade-off here. We love the idea of historic preservation, but at the same time, we want to respect the neighborhood and their right to a peaceful life and to their quality of life. And we're trying to tread that line. Go ahead, Mr. O'Handlon.
Respectfully, it's, it's not a trade-off. The, the latitude that you all have to allow this special permit use can't affect the quality of life of the neighborhood. It's not a trade-off, you, you don't have the authority legally to trade off their, their peace.
We're aware of that, Mr. O'Handlon. I, I know that we have to find that they use is consistent with the residential zone.
Right, and that's, that's the nub of it. And if I sound frustrated just because we have tried to engage and we haven't been able to. So if, if they will engage, we would love to talk to them and we hope.
All you have to do is submit the issues to us, which you've now done. And we will raise them with the applicant and we will resolve them because our job is to address the neighborhood's concerns because this is a special permit and therefore then this neighbor concerns are very important.
That's the first we've heard of this tonight, tonight.
What is the first you've heard of tonight?
Neighbor's concerns are important because.
I have asked, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Handlon, I'm, I'm, I'm getting quite cross with this because I've asked, we talked repeatedly about the number of events and the possible impact on the neighborhood. We've asked that and we asked that in December as well. We said, well, there was a concern about that and that we didn't want them to hit the ground running with a lot of events that would disturb the neighborhood, we wanted to phase it in. It's been very clear and I think most people would tell you that this is a commission that's very responsive to neighbor concerns. Okay, Mr. O'Handlon, now that I've admonished you and not Mr. Hegney, I will find something to admonish Mr. Hegney about so that we can even the balance. Um, would you like to add something else?
No, I appreciate the concern, it's just my frustration reflects my.
I hear you.
My client's frustration, I mean, it's just.
I hear you.
Needs to be a dialogue about this or it's not going to work. And you all are going to have a nightmare of, of regulatory problems with a special permit use that the neighbors don't, um, welcome.
And that you did hear me say, and you did hear me say that, didn't you?
Well, you haven't said that you are going to encourage them to talk to us, that's a dialogue.
I am not going to say that if, if Mr. Hegney and his, his client have made a decision to respond a certain way, it is not my role to, to give them lessons in etiquette. My role is to resolve the issues for Round Hill and you present the issues to Round, uh, the Round Hill issues and the commission will do its best to resolve them. Mr. Pruner, I believe you're on.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much. Um, the, uh, I think one of the things that's going on here is we have kind of two levels of communication. Um, Mimi has been good about talking to us. Uh, we had a nice tour of the facility. In fact, she gave the executive committee a tour and then she turned around and gave the board of directors of the Round Hill Association a tour. And as I'm sure you saw out there, what she's doing is really amazing. Um, I saw the property as a Realtor when it was for sale over the past several years. And, um, I still remember the barns and the greenhouses and the other things on the property that were so badly neglected. Um, and so I think everybody here is very supportive of the idea and the concept. I had a thought on how the various uses can be provided, but I, I sent that off to, um, the attorneys to let them, um, think about what it is. Uh, I'm not sure they necessarily would, it, this may be the path they want to follow. Having said that, um, we, we do want to sit down. And I, I think the, the main issue as the, as it's evolved with the board, I don't want to, I don't want to speak with them because I haven't been to all of the meetings. But for me personally, um, when you go out on that property, seventy-five acres of which the south end butts up against, um, the Merritt Parkway, which provides, um, for a lot of properties, a negative here, it actually provides kind of a white noise background that any event would have to overcome. And the, and as Ted said, the neighbors, the neighborhood's main concern are the external impacts. The, um, the traffic, the light and the noise. All of those are greatly mitigated, as was said earlier, in the size of the property and the amount of cars that can be handled internally as, uh, as to the traffic. Um, having said that, we would like, we would like, we would like a discussion on some of the specifics, I think, that would just be reassuring to everybody. At the same time, I totally agree with what you said, which is that this is a situation that's evolving. Um, it may turn out, uh, which I don't think is likely, that nobody wants to have a wedding there. Um, I'm actually thinking about getting remarried just because it's such a cool place. Um, but, um, the, um,
You're inviting us because it's not a private event, okay?
Oh, it certainly.
Marry to the same person?
Right, and I, the, um, luckily Libby is at work right now in downtown. So anyway, the, um, uh, we, we have had a cordial relationship with Mimi. I think on the legal side, there, there are some issues obviously that need to be addressed and, and we would like to have some feelings, some guiding principles, some, um, basic rules as to, and, and it's particularly the larger events because I don't think we're, I don't think, you know, you could have three, four events on that property uh, with the number of buildings there. Um, and, um, most of the people at the event wouldn't even, wouldn't even know they were there. Uh, once again, we thank Mimi sincerely for buying the property, given what the, um, what was proposed, uh, what was proposed there. Uh, I'm a Realtor and I make my money selling properties. I did not want to see that go on there because it would not benefit the neighborhood. Um, one of the other things to point out is that directly across the street from this property, the neighbor that has the greatest impact is Mimi herself. Uh, so I don't expect that we're going to see large numbers of, um, people inconveniencing the primary neighborhood. Um, so it's a self, in many ways, a self-regulating issue and it is a, and it is, and my understanding is a special permit is, um, specific to that owner. So to the extent that the ownership changes, a special permit would change. Um, but yeah, as I said, um, we'd love to talk. Uh, we appreciate what she's done and we appreciate the communications that she's done on a, on a, on a personal um, one-to-one level, uh, with our executive committee and our, and our board. And, um, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that was, uh, that's basically where we stand at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Pruner. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pruner? Um, then we're going to turn to Diane Fox. And Ms. Fox, if you would go ahead.
There we go, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity to address you as the chair of the Preservation Network of the Greenwich Historical Society. I'm here to, and you, I know, have already read, um, the lengthy missive that we sent, uh, that our members really felt strongly about. And, and want to first of all, thank Mr. Hegney, um, in terms of his statement that he would like to work with us. I know that part of our membership, um, we have Stephen Bishop, the HDC, Deborah Meckey, Historical Society. Um, we have a wide variety of people who represent different organizations and they're all come together with these kinds of concerns. And we look forward to working with you and we thank you for that, Mr. Hegney. Um, what we would like to, and I'm, I'm pleased to hear that, uh, the Grist Mill has been somewhat shored up, I guess is the word I would say. If we could get some pictures of what work has been done on that to show that it has been, uh, addressed, that would be really great. And you could just send them to us and I'm sure the commission would like to see those. That would be very helpful so we can see what the present condition is of, um, making sure that the building is in fact stabilized, I guess is a better word for it at this point. I know that, uh, both, um, the HDC, Stephen Bishop and Deborah Meckey, as well as myself, uh, had been out on the site years ago, trampling through and saw the mill. So we have some recollections and I know Eric Bauer had raised this issue before, have recollections of what that mill building did look like and hopefully, um, it has not gotten too much more damaged, um, particularly on the interior because there was some significant, um, possibilities, let me put it that way. We're not going to be getting into the question of the interior of the mill, but the type of repair and restoration work on the exterior, we do want to make sure that, you mentioned shingles and I'm, I'm not sure that was in keeping with the original design and that was one of the issues that is in the declaration of restrictions. So that's one of the reasons we'd like to see a photo and number two, um, not when there's snow on the ground right this minute, but perhaps some of our members, uh, who are particularly concerned on this would be able to come out and we would appreciate it. Mr. Stern like would give us the opportunity, along with you, Mr. Hegney, um, at some future time. We're going to leave the door open on that because the way this winter was going, we may not be looking at anything until the summer at this point. So, um, I want to just offer that opportunity. So thank you for that and I'm glad to see that. The, the question of the conservation easements, we have some, some concerns, not major issues with. But, um, thinking about what you have already described and that is the number of events that are going to be occurring. The, and I'm sure this will be addressed by Mr. Adler's report, but the, um, possibility of where people are parking, um, and I'm sure it'll be controlled and there will be directions and all of that. Um, but there cannot be any paved area within the conservation easement areas for additional parking. So that's just something I just want to bring to your attention because that may impact some kind of future. People tend to park on lawns, which we totally understand, but the preservation of the conservation easement areas is critical. And also about cutting trees down and putting in more trails, that was one of the other issues that some of our members wanted to raise, so I, I have raised that. The preservation facade easement on the manor house is still a concern. Um, we understand you didn't want a historic overlay and some of the neighbors didn't want it either. Um, totally understood, but as I mentioned in this letter, um, it says that the old mill farmer state, uh, which included the manor house stable and community house, which was staff residences, were designed by the noted architect Louis Bowman, built in the nineteen twenties and has been considered to be, I would say, historic treasure. So one of the questions that we're really raising at this point is whether or not the applicant would be willing to put a facade easement on the manor house. Now, I know you've done work on the other buildings, so I can't speak to that issue of whether they were restored to the, the way they originally were or not, because I have not seen them. Um, and I haven't seen any pictures of them. But for the manor house, there is a strong, uh, feeling that there should be some kind of facade easement because in the future repairs, if I can use that word, um, and maybe additions maybe needed. And the question then becomes what happens to the original design that was scheduled at that point? So if that's, we would like that to be addressed in some fashion. And if there are reservations, to explain what those reservations are. So I'll keep my notes very simple and, uh, excuse me, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Uh, our members are, um, including the land trust, for an example, uh, really want to support this. I mean, it's not a question of we're coming out against this project or the uses. Uh, I think the question really is how this is going to be handled and we're looking more from the historic standpoint and the environmental standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fox. Our next speaker is Elise Merrill. And if you would go ahead.
Unmute, okay.
No, you're good.
Can you see me?
We can see you and hear you.
Wow, okay, I just wanted to, uh, say that, um, I've known Mimi for maybe a couple of years. And after all the work we did in saving that property from, um, twenty-nine condos, a health center and God knows what the impact to the environment would have been and the water system. We, everyone I know in the back country and downtown are so grateful to what Mimi has done and so respectful of her, of her desire to um, be part of the community to, she's very interested in education, in the ecosystem um, and in, in, uh, justice. Uh, Mimi is an extraordinary person in our community. And I just wanted you to know how grateful, uh, we are for her taking on this massive project. It's not going to be developed, it's not going to be chopped into pieces. And, um, the numbers that people are afraid of with, with, uh, uh, people coming and going is miniscule compared to what had been discussed and almost happened before, except for this amazing outpouring of community support. So I commend Mimi and wish her well and I hope everybody else will, will support her and her project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Merrill. That seems to be it for the public comment. Um, Mr. Hegney, I believe you have work ahead of you.
Uh, yes, thank, thank you, Madam Chair, for providing us with that work. Um, and, and the thoughts and, and suggestions. I, uh, I think this was a very healthy and, and productive discussion that we've had this evening. Uh, gives us a lot to work with. Uh, I, I, I do want to, uh, apologize to, uh, Mr. Uh, O'Handlon if I've.
He might be gone, I think I probably, I don't know, I'm not seeing him, but perhaps you would reach out to him. There he is, Mr. O'Handlon has got his hand up, he's still here. So you're apologizing to Mr. O'Handlon for.
Not my intent to upset him and, uh, I, I did, did want to comment a bit on the, the five-page letter that he had sent to me and then provided to you. It had some twenty-five specific conditions that they were looking to have placed on this. It, it, it seemed a bit over the top.
Uh, and I. We will work it through and we will.
I know.
Do what's right for the neighborhood while preserving a historic structure and we'll work through it. And if you would respond to.
Is my client's goal, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And, and I will reach out to Mr. O'Handlon.
That would be terrific.
So that we can go over some of these issues.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. So we will leave this application open and hope to see you soon.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you. And fishing out, okay. So for our next item.
Um, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Stern, like, did you want to say something? Because you had your, you looked like you had your hand up. Mr. Stern, like, no. You, you've got your mic off, here.
I think she was just saying goodbye.
I was kind of saying goodbye and thank you.
Okay, good, wait, I didn't want you to feel like somebody.
You were me.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, um, alrighty, so our next application is SVP Dublin Hill LLC at fifty Dublin Hill Drive uh, for a final site plan and special permit. This is an approved property that is already in construction. Um, and it's an a hundred and fifty cubic foot property. They are now adding a tennis court and they've made some changes to the site plan. Um, we are waiting for, hello, Mr. DeAndrea.
Good evening again. I am ready to go, if you are.
We're ready to go.
I am representing SVP Dublin Hill LLC. They are the current owners of lot number four on map nine, one, one, six in the land records. We have had, um, an application before the, uh, the commission, um, for a single-family dwelling that was approved under. that was approved under PLPZ 2019457 and 458. That was approved back on December, excuse me, January 7, 2020. Since that time, the owners of the property have contracted with a purchaser to build the home rather than a spec home. And that has resulted in a few changes to the footprint of the dwelling and the request to have a sports court. So needless to say, we went right to work and found a way in which to relocate the home slightly in a clockwise direction around the cul-de-sac, basically in the center of the property and not too far from where it had had been approved back in 2020. And we also proposed a tennis court in the northeast corner of the site. We're here before you again because we are 150,000 cubic feet, not 150 feet, as Chairman said. But we are there because we exceed
150 cubes.
Cubic, 150,000 cubic feet.
Yeah, we just say cubes. It's PNC lingo.
So we are here for that reason, seeking your approval.
Yep.
The changes that we have made have been reviewed by DPW. There were comments issued on February 9, and then subsequently on the 11. The 11 demonstrated or recorded documented that DPW had approved our drainage design. There were a couple of minor issues. We have since addressed those minor issues and resubmitted back through Bianca for transmission down the hall to DPW. Those are done in anticipation of receiving a amended building permit. There has been a building permit already issued in in response to the initial approval by the commission for the site plan. I don't know that I have to go back in the history.
No, essentially, you've got the health department still outstanding. You've submitted
Department still not outstanding at all. The health department issued a memo back to the to staff indicating they had approved it.
Okay, I missed that.
The changes.
Okay, if I missed that, Mr. McBy, do you have that? Did you see it today?
It was a memo from Michael.
Email memo from Mr. Long.
Okay. Okay, so then you have, I just, I'm just trying to move you along, Mr. DeAndrea. So that brings you down to this tricky thing that we have that conservation had a reaction to this. And we fully understand that if you weren't amending the building, and we're only adding the tennis courts that you wouldn't be before us, but the aggregate is impactful environmentally. And so we'd like to ask you to consider the comments that conservation is making. And if you could do something to move forward in that direction.
Right. What I'm going to do, if you, if I may, is respond to the comments from Alex Randamok. February 10 is the date.
Yes.
Actually submitted one on the 9, and then subsequently modified it first with something for February 10. One of the problems we have with the comments from conservation is they're always made in a vacuum. But in this particular case, and I risk being admonished here, but fact is
I've used up my admonishment quota for the night.
I just, I just didn't want to be left out. That's all.
I love taking out. I didn't, I didn't admonish him. I only admonished Mr. O'Handlon.
So as we head down that slippery slope of admonishment, the comments that are are made by Ms. Mock are unfortunately made in a vacuum. And I've asked her on numerous occasions if she would just give us a call, and we could talk about a few things, and then we won't have these issues that I'm going to respond to. So the first one in her comment sheet dated February 10 is that she points out, the proposal does not reflect the balance of use of land and no compensation for the environmental damage. The main issue that she has is always in tree removal. This particular property, unlike, not unlike the others on the site, required some tree removal. There's no doubt about it. And in fact, the area where we are proposing that the sports court in the northeast corner of the lot is actually adjacent to the septic system. The septic system is chosen or was chosen as the best place for the septic system on the lot. Health department was involved from day one. Numerous tests were done. We developed a very complete design for it. And the proposal to build the court did not adversely impact that. In fact, in some ways, it helps it because we're shedding water away from the septic system on the surface by directing the water from the tennis court to a rain garden on the westerly side.
Mr. DeAndrea, did you, but if I could just interrupt you for a sec, speaking of the tennis court's impact, did you revise, did you fully revise the landscaping plan to reflect?
No.
Okay, so that's one of the things she's asking.
The, there was a landscape plan done by William Kenny association for the original design.
Right. And what she's asking is that it be updated.
Yes, it will be updated.
Okay. And then what we're going to ask you is that you do lots of good things in that to offset the impact of the tennis court?
Yes.
Okay.
Without without hesitation, I will say that the the developer of these properties is well known for a variety of reasons, but one of them is the landscaping that they do is intense and complete and very artistic, if I may, and also environmentally
We're very familiar.
Worried about that.
No, we're very familiar with Mr. Kenny's work. We do know his work. And if you would update the landscape plan, I think that would go. Basically, what she's saying is you've added a whole bunch of impervious surface, which is totally within your prerogative. However, can you reflect the impact that it's having on the landscaping? And can you offset it some more in how you in how you handle the property? The the meadow mix and all of that kind of stuff. So could we ask you to do that and to submit it to staff and conservation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We've already talked the owner and the developer and and Bill Kenny, I was on the the phone with him today, and he's he's already enlisted by the owner to do that. So as we move along, as I wanted to say, in the area of the court, the trees that were removed in that area were removed for the septic system. So putting the court in that area is not a problem. Adding the rain garden provides us an area where we can provide more landscaping and filtration of
We would ask you, since you're removing a total of 70, was it 79 trees?
There may be.
Okay, there were 60 originally. There's 19 more now due to the tennis court. If when you have Mr. Kenny revise the landscaping plan, if you would add more trees because Ms. Mock is not alone in being a tree lover.
We all are, and and the landscaping will be
Okay, great. Okay.
I would like to go to the next comment that she made, which was relative to the tennis court. There is no nothing in any of the decisions that have been made relative to this subdivision or this particular property that requires a setback of any distance from the conservation boundaries. You will remember that the conservation easement was provided at your request and our agreement in lieu of trying to make a green belt all the way from
Katie, you're gonna have to refresh me. I remember this discussion.
Yes.
We wanted the greenway.
Yes.
And we got the easement.
Yes.
And but
Without the people walking through it.
Right.
Although, although one of the provisions of the easement is that we can walk through it, and we can have passive recreation and paths. Another applica, another aspect of that.
But conservation, conservation is asking for a setback from the easement.
No, there, she's suggesting that it's required, but we cannot provide it, and it's not part of the plan. So the the walls that are being constructed.
Looking at Katie.
Yeah, the walls that are being constructed.
Remember how that discussion went, because I don't.
Well, it's never been involved. And if I go back to the conservation easement, there's nothing in there that requires any any separation of structures. And in fact,
But there was something about Katie.
So I do, yeah, I do. I do remember the discussion about who could go in there, etc. The the only, I think, Mr. DeAndrea, the the time that I can recall this came up with setbacks from the conservation easement area is the development behind Portia, his name is escaping me right now, on Edgewood. Anyway, it was, it was, what had happened was they built the walls right up to the conservation easement area, and it obviously becomes difficult slash impossible to get equipment into the conservation easement area should one need to. So presumably, there's not stone walls going all on the way such that you can't get in there with equipment should one need to, right?
That's correct. This, this is only on this particular lot where the sports court became a a request, and we were able to meet that request. In the document.
It was ledges, Mr. DeAndrea. That was the one I was saying.
Oh, that's legends. Well, I didn't work on that one, but I I understand your point. The the document that was edited, you know, several times, as you know, I didn't do it, but we do have Melissa Clawbird participating tonight. If you wanted to ask any questions about the document, she did edit it several times, you know, with the back and forth that goes on with the law department and the conservation. But I was not involved in that, therefore, I I won't comment. And if you need Melissa to comment, she will. But in the declaration, it's clear that we have, you noted, you noted in the declaration that there was going to be a septic system. There was going to be fill slopes on lots three and four. And they have been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it was stated right in the document. So it was recognized that would be, we would be doing those things. And it's reiterated in paragraph B on the same page four of the document. And then also in the document and under section 8A, the owners were given the right to install, maintain, repair, and replace any drainage structures. So one of the comments that was being made was that we don't have the right to put the level spreader that we're proposing adjacent to the septic system within the conservation area. Well, we do have that right through the easement. And it's a, it's a safe gap, fallback, whatever you want to call stopgap overflow provision. So while we have been designing the systems to retain the volume generated during the 25 year event, we've also reduced the peaks for the 50 year, and in some cases, the 100 year event. But in the event that we do have an excess storm, there might be some discharge, and that's why we propose the level spreader. We do note that the DPW has approved our design as being in accordance with our drainage manual. The drain, the rain garden was designed specifically to accommodate the the tennis court as the extra element. All the other components of the original design, site design are included in the current plan. So we didn't eliminate anything by relocating the house slightly clockwise from its original position and providing for the tennis court. We also have a comment about the when she suggested that the level spreader be 15 feet away from the boundary of the conservation easement. That's just made. She just made that statement, but there's no basis for it. So we provide the function in the easement of the potential for overflow. And keeping in mind, our property extends, in that particular case, about another 60 feet before we reach our boundary. So in all, for all intents and purposes, we are 60 feet away from a boundary that the drainage manual suggests that we should be 10. So we're well in advance, well beyond the the minimum requirements for that. And and I just leave you with that final thought that we do have the right by the easement to do what we're proposing.
Katie.
Yeah, I mean, it's the document's been filed on the land record, so that's
I can give you the reference.
Now, who filed it, by the way? Was that, was that done, that was done by the applicant, or that was done as part of the sign off process?
It was part of the sign off process. We had to file the document with you. The document, the plans, the landscape plan were all submitted as part of the sign off. When the subdivision was approved, the decision letter dated August 6 of 2019 was very specific about the few things that we had to do. And one of them was the declaration of restrictions and the the satisfactory, if you will, to the conservation department and law department.
Right. So that, yeah, so I mean, so that now that it's, the declaration's been filed and and support systems, if you will, are permitted within that area. Is it, isn't that even more reason then that you would want to make sure it's it's not sort of blocked by walls and whatnot and give a little space there?
We do have that ability, Katie. We don't have a wall continually across the the entire
Not across the whole thing, but but do you have easements over other people's properties and whatnot?
No, there are no, that's another misstatement that 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 Alexandra had. It's not her fault entirely because she didn't have all the information that we have because she didn't call us. However, the DBW made a comment that the way we had proposed to combine some of the systems would require easements. The owner and the prospective purchaser said, we don't want to be involved in an easement. So how else can you do it? Well, it was simple. We left the drainage patterns the same. We just put the proportion of the level spreader that we required for lot four on our property and the easement. I mean, the level spreader that we required for lot three, which is the adjacent property to the north, we just cut off some of that. So if you look at the current plans that were submitted, and I sent that down highlighted through Bianca, she said she would present it to you. You'll see that the level spreader on lot four does not encroach over lot three. And the drainage patterns that we place the level spreader in maintains the same watershed. If you know the way we review our designs with Scott Marucci, every we call it point of concern is identified in the beginning. And we're obligated to maintain the peaks and the volumes into each of those points of concern. So in our case, we placed our level spreader in the same area, contributing to the same point of concern. And through the computations proved that we're able to reduce the peaks and the volumes in accordance with the manual. DPW approved that compliance with the drainage manual and sent a memo to you. Alexandra did not have the advantage of that change because I wanted to say for the record, we received the comments on the 9. And today is the 17. So the comments that were made by DPW were minor. We were able to modify them quickly and get them back. It's important that we do that so that we can continue construction on the dwelling. And that's the objective tonight.
I mean, I guess, I guess the concern, Mr. DeAndrea, is that, yeah, you don't have, you know, the walls are not along the whole level there, but there's like an extremely steep slope, though, in the other areas. So although there's not a retaining wall right on it, I mean, I guess I'm just saying, like, what if you needed to get into the conservation area to do stuff?
We have that ability, as I said, over in the southeast corner or in the middle of the lot. Those are not excessive slopes. We're we're able to to come out there. Notice, we didn't build walls all over the place. We're trying to maintain the slopes. There isn't, you know, a natural slope in that area. The grade plane criteria and the grading and the expense, etc., don't allow us to do more. So we've minimized the amount of walls, and we've minimized the amount of filling to accommodate the topography, which on this particular lot drops significantly from west to east.
And then, I'm sorry, one quick question. On lot four?
Yes.
Is there, and on lot five, is there any drainage, septic? Well, I guess there is a little bit over there on lot five, but I don't really see very much in the conservation area on those two lots. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
When you say not too much, meaning not too much what?
Drainage, drainage structures.
In lot number five, we had originally designed our drainage system to include a rain garden in the southwest corner of lot.
Yeah, that's the way, there, well, it looks to be on the east, on the Yeah, on this, right, exactly, on the southeast, right, okay.
Southwest, it's southwest, but the southwest corner of lot number five, there's a rain garden. That was already part of the plan when we discussed the the conservation easement.
Right. But I mean, I don't, so that, okay, so I see that, but I don't really see much else, right?
Well, no, except that on the middle of lot number five, we have two levels, oh, we have a level spreader in the middle, if you will, on the eastern side along the conservation area. And then we have one on the north side that would also drain into that point of concern.
And and that's what Alexandra doesn't like is that level spreader on the edge of the conservation area. And, and that's what Alexandra doesn't like is that level spreader on the edge of the conservation area.
Like it, but it's not prohibited and it's also.
I got it. That's, I'm just.
It's a very necessary component of our drainage.
Mr. DeAndrea.
Yes.
Okay, that's Katie, that's just since you've got it open.
Look to be, it looks to be a distance away from it. It's not right on it.
Right, and what I, what I'm seeing and I'm looking at Mr. DeAndrea's plan is that on lot five.
Yes.
The rain garden, the rain garden is, you know, is straddles the conservation line. But that's previously approved.
Yes.
We have two, we have.
Which one? The one with, the one with the rain garden?
Yes, lot number five, the rain garden.
We're not talking about that one. We're talking about the one that's sort of at the bottom of the hill.
Okay, so that one actually is outside of the conservation area by a pretty good distance, I would say. Okay, same, same with the other. Overflow.
Right.
That's actually, that's, that's actually outside as well, by a great distance.
Yes.
Now on lot four. Okay, there's two overflows. One is outside the, the conservation area, not a great distance, but it's outside. And the second one actually does transverse into the. Into it.
Correct.
But according to the paragraph from, of the easement. Yeah, I guess it was eight B or eight A. Right, it, you know, even anything you get, you go into the easement area.
Okay.
And that was, that was, what is it, October two thousand nineteen, when that was filed and recorded.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good.
Yes.
Okay. You've got the height of the walls, you've got the height of the walls.
The walls are specified on the zoning location survey that was submitted with our package for your review.
Yeah, and Jody had a comment on them?
I will comment for you that if you look at the zoning location survey, the, the height of the wall is in the, well, about a third of it. Along the conservation easement is only two feet high. And then it expands to a second wall. That's not a grade plane wall, but still is only, at the maximum, only four feet high. That's a wall that supports the tennis court above the septic system. As I said, the extra fill enables us to have more material above and around. The septic system to provide for more renovation and treatment in the flow path, which again is also to the east.
And what was Mr. La, Mr. LaRose's comment on it, Nick? I don't have it open right now. I'm on the. On the height of the walls.
Mr. You, Mr. Mr. Couture is right.
Couture, I'm sorry. Sorry, Pat.
Okay.
One second, I'm looking for that right now.
All right, I'll scroll back. I just was stuck way down in the drainage plan.
Give me one second. Mr. DeAndrea, just a quick question. The level spreader that's actually in the. Conservation area, that would only be active at such time as that the rain garden either one is full or fails?
It would, you, you might see some flow at the fifty year storm. We're designing and holding the water for the twenty-five year storm. So theoretically, we don't have any water running off this site. It was one of our. Preliminary objectives, parameters that we self-impose that we're cognizant of the flow paths. The adjacent neighbors down gradient. And we wanted to make sure that we retained our water on site. So that we have that extra capacity. As I said, we didn't diminish any of the components from the original approval. And now we have the rain guard.
All right, okay, so the, the wall height comment was not from Jody. I don't know where it came from. It's in the staff report and I don't remember where I'm looking now.
I'm looking at Mr. Couture's. There's nothing there.
Nothing there. Okay, so I believe we have hit all the topics at this point. And does the commission have anything to comment on? We have a member of the public who wishes to speak. And no, I'm hearing silence. So Ms. Alvarez, if you would go ahead. All right, Ms. Alvarez, if you would.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Francia Alvarez and I'm with the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. I'll be very brief. With the additional trees that are going to be coming off of this property, it goes up to seventy-nine trees. At fifty Dublin Hill. At forty-two Dublin Hill, there were seventy-one trees that are to be removed. So now you're up to a hundred and fifty trees on these two lots that are going to be removed. If you take then average of that, that's seventy-five trees per lot, there's six lots, that would be four hundred and fifty trees. The GTC urges P and Z to review the subdivision in total. To maximize forested open space and to assess how much tree canopy acreage will be lost overall. And what effect that will have on the Mayanus River watershed and downstream neighbors. We hope that whatever development is ultimately approved, Greenwich will meet the goal set out by the twenty-twelve Mayanus River watershed based plan. To provide for development that will minimize developmental impacts to our forest and the benefits that they provide the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Basically, we made that comment to you already, Mr. DeAndrea, that if you were. When you revise the landscaping plan that you try to offset the tree loss.
It will definitely be an offset and it'll be a, a very appropriate landscape plan.
Okay, and you know, we'd love to see, we'd love to see a two for one replacement if you could do that. Does anybody else on the commission have any comments on this application? No. In that event, what about, would everybody support closing this application at this time? Does anybody object to closing it? Nobody objects, right? Okay, this application is now closed. I assume everybody's ready to vote it. In that case, Mr. McRae, if you would present us with a motion.
Okay, fifty Dublin Hill Drive, application P L P Z. Twenty twenty seventeen, final site plan special permit. Applicant is requesting final site plan special permit to approval to revise the footprint and location of the approved residence. And construct a tennis court. The volume of the residence exceeds a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. The applicant received an approval for final site plan and special permit, P L P Z two thousand nineteen. Four, five, seven, four, five, eight, to construct the dwelling on January seventh, two thousand twenty. I got that date wrong, but that's okay. It's received a building permit. The commission finds that zoning issue comments to ten twenty-one, indicating the proposal will meet the requirements of the BZR.
Sorry, Mr. McRae, could you, could you slow it down just a little bit? Sorry.
Okay, zoning issue comments to ten twenty-one, indicating the proposal meets the requirements of the BZR. And endorse the project for zoning permit sign off. Engineering issue comments to eleven twenty-one, indicating concerns to be addressed prior to zoning permit sign off. Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire on one twenty, indicating no action needs required. Health department issued a memo on two twelve twenty-one, indicating approval of the revised plans. And conservation had issued comments dated two ten, indicating concerns with the application. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. They revised landscape shall be submitted to reflect altered plans and add more appropriate tree materials to offset the tree loss. The applicant shall abide by any and all provisions outlined in the original one seven twenty-one final site plan special permit. P L P Z two thousand nineteen, five, four, five, seven, four, five, eight. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues. Anything to add?
I'm good with it. Anybody else? Okay, do I have a second?
Before we, before a second, actually, Mr. LaRoe. The, the, if I have the date wrong for the original approval, if you can just fill that in for me, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Get a demerit for a mistake, I'm sure.
I'm being admonished, right?
It's a new word for the P and C vocabulary. You will admonish that attorney now. Did I get a second? Was that, was that Levy?
Yes.
Okay, Levy seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. And with that, the, the application is approved five, nothing. And that's it, folks. That's the end of the public hearing.
Thank you all.
Mr. Bazili, thanks as ever for your patience. I'm sorry it was a long night. And that's it.
Good night.
And Dave, well, I see everybody. Bad news, folks. I see everybody tomorrow. We have six, one, ten and we have affordable housing for those who do both. Just saying.
Thank you.
It's your P and Z week. Wait, you gotta come to the six, one, ten discussion.
Who does?
Lo does.
Oh, I'll tell him.
Which is first? Which is first?
The six, one, ten is at one PM and the affordable housing is at four. And you all already have a copy of the trust fund document that we're going to discuss at affordable housing. Yes, at affordable housing. I hope I can keep this straight tomorrow. And at one, we're going to discuss new numbers that Bob Baralek has done.
Where is he anyway? I, I saw him at one point.
He had a meeting that conflicted. He told us yesterday he had a seven o'clock meeting, so he only stuck with us for two hours. Of the very long meeting. Sorry, folks, it got long on those two applications. All right.
You were doing really well earlier too. You were moving it right along and then. I don't know what happened.
I know. And then I didn't admonish.
Please don't admonish the chair.
Billy admonished.
Julie admonished. Okay, folks, see you, everybody.
Thank you.